Good afternoon, everybody. The mayor is not here today. Or maybe here to join us later. We had another emergency move. We're hoping that's not too serious. We have a quorum. I see.
We do.
All right, this is a a work session for the village of Bamarinak. I'll take a motion to open the meeting.
Work it out any way you want.
I guess we can, as long as the three of us agree, we can do whatever we like here, right?
Within reason.
Within reason. All in favor? Unanimous? Unanimous. So it's, there's three of us. It's not need to get too formal. All right, we move to adopt the agenda?
In adopting the agenda, which I'm happy to move, there it's been a suggestion of putting discussion off till next meeting. Information came in today and nobody's had a chance to review it.
This is the 1A?
No, this is 1 1E. We had said at the last meeting, it would be number one on the agenda. And I think what we should do is make it number one on the agenda two weeks from today. If nobody has an objection, I'd like to suggest that and move the adoption of the agenda accordingly.
Yeah, I'd second that because we have, we got information today and I think HCZ, HCZM Chair Bert isn't going to be able to come today or review it. So I think two weeks is a good idea.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, we're putting off 1E to the top of the agenda in two weeks. All right, and we're adopting the agenda at the same time?
The motion was already to adopt it as well. That change.
We're good. All right, so let's start with old business. Enforcement of multiple dwelling law.
That's supposed to be for the second meeting in April, so that should also be there. It would be number two.
Oh, this is, this is not the second week. Okay, great. So that's postponed as well. All right. 1B then interim report on ad hoc ethics code review, and we have ad hoc committee members present to talk?
Oh, Dan's here. Yeah, Dan.
Okay, all right, great. Let's, Dan, it's yours. Go ahead.
Um. I'm not sure what you would like me to do.
I don't know. Well, I read through this. It seemed, it seemed kind of complex. What are we? What's the bottom line on this, on this, these changes that you'd like to tell us about?
Well, if you read our report, the report dated December 17th, it goes through all of the many changes that we have recommended. Were the revising the code of ethics, everything from the definitions to the languages that are used to how the board is, the ethics board deals with questions with confidentiality, with disclosure statements. If I were to take you through section by section, I essentially, I would be reading the report because I don't, I think it was all substantive. And there are a lot of changes that we are proposing. I, what the best thing to do would be to, I mean, I could spend two hours doing that.
Let's not do that. Let's not do that. Let's then just accept the report and postpone any action, I guess. There's only three of us here.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I think we've accepted the report. I think we have to decide. I think, I think our next step is to, for the Board of Trustees to go through it and, you know, Tom's not here and he's the one that wanted to do it now. I think we need to go through and figure out, because there are, there's a draft revised law that's been provided to us. And I think we need to, we all need to figure out whether we want to make all the changes or some of the changes.
Because it struck me as being very complicated and I'm not sure that a, an average person who would join one of these boards would necessarily understand all of it. So I want to, I want to understand it a little more fully. Dan, you had something to say?
Yeah, actually, I agree with you.
Okay.
I think there, I have several things that, first, I want to compliment again the committee because I think they've done an extraordinary amount of work. Tackled some very tough issues, made some, I think, meaningful recommendations. I don't agree with 100% of them, but I agree with a lot of them. But I do agree with the effort and the substance of what they were trying to accomplish. But I do have some specifics, not of things that I'm concerned about. I think the definitions still are not, not easily understood in lay language from people who are not experienced, you know, in law or reading legal documents. So when you, you know, I think that that gets to be an issue. I think there should be some more on transparency. I'm concerned about having the subpoena power in there. I'm very concerned about if there is an issue, there's a referral, it says it goes to the village manager. I don't think the village manager should be involved. I don't think that is the right role. I am concerned about, we have no timetables or the ethics board to act. And I think that is a major issue. If it's a land use board, I know there was discussion, at least one of the meetings that I listened to that where the committee talked about if there was a land use board that they had to make every effort to resolve the issue before the next, their next meeting, the next land use board meeting, or at least comment to them that they are, there's an issue that they are investigating with a timetable. But I'm concerned about when somebody asks for a ruling or makes a complaint. It can sit without anybody knowing what's going on for a very lengthy amount of time. And I think that, you know, that after 60 days of, you know, something coming before them, they have to notify all parties involved and every 30 days after that, give them an update as to where things are. That would, in my mind, make the the process move on a more reasonable timetable. Doesn't mean that they can't take the amount of time they need. But I know there have been investigations where all parties were not notified and action was taken. I know that people have made, asked for clarifications or you know, asking for a, you know, guidance. And it has been there for many, many months and sometimes over a year. And this goes back over many, many boards. It's not a reflection necessarily of those who were on the ethics committee today, but it goes back for a long period of time. No pun intended on that. So those are the types of things that I am concerned about. You know, and I think these are things that Dan is right, it's now in the Board of Trustees' lap to try and go through and work out the things that, you know, should be updated and how they should be updated and agree or modify or not accept, you know, I think that that would be the approach. And it's not going to be Lou, I don't think it's going to be simple to do. So I think we need to set aside some time to do it. You know, at a work session, there are many pressing things, you know, in front of the board right now, like, not the least of which is the budget. So maybe we can set some time aside, maybe after the budget, because that will that will be taken care of in a relatively short period of time. And then we can devote, you know, a, you know, maybe a meeting to that. That would be my suggestion.
This seems to deserve its own, its own work session. There's a lot here. Dan, I, Carson, I read in there that there were some recommendations about moving some training responsibilities from the manager to the Board of Trustees. Was that, did I read that correctly?
No, from the Ethics Board to the Village Manager.
Village Manager, I see. And your rationale for the Village Manager was to keep it, what, politics free or?
No, the, it should be politics free. The recommendation is based on the fact that ethics training is extremely important, should be regularized, and rather than give it to a volunteer board that meets on occasion, does not have a staff and is not paid for its work, it, it should fit the pattern of ethics training that is present in private industry and in government where HR is responsible for ethics training. And it is regularized and HR can keep track, or the Village Manager can keep track of its own employees for purposes of training. It would be, I think, highly unreliable to ask a volunteer board to take on the responsibility and in private industry, which I can speak for because I came out of private industry. Ethics training now is highly regularized. There are a lot of firm, a lot of private firms that administer it. It is the better choice, I think, to retain the services of a firm that administers ethics training. Can be done online, you can keep track of it, you calendar it, you know who's taking it, who's not taking it, and it's very, very efficient. And that's the reason we made the recommendation to transfer it from the Volunteer Ethics Board to the, in effect, the village's own employment arm, which is the Village Manager.
And is there, can I ask a question if you don't mind?
Sure, Dan, go ahead.
Is there a reason that you've asked for the village manager to be responsible or the HR department?
Well, our understanding was that there was not a formal HR department at the time we did our work. I think we were informed that there was an HR, there was HR staff being denominated or HR staff coming on. But since the village manager was the established hireer and supervisor of village employees, we felt that's where it should sit. But if I can speak for my committee, I don't think we are particularly wedded to which office at the village administers it, as long as it is a permanent office of the village, has a budget, has the staff to administer the program. And can do so in the way that almost all firms conduct such training, which is online. Controls the IT structure for it. So if the board decides, the Board of Trustees decides that another office should handle it, and it is made permanent and there's a structure given, then that's up to the Board of Trustees.
From an administrative perspective, we do have a, an HR department now headed up by Danielle Gillyard. We have a software program. Speaker, not speaker, the, my friend. We do have a system in place where schedule, training is scheduled online. There's an online tracking system. People have to go through the process and it just, it's also set up in such a fashion that you just can't press next, 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 next. You actually have to go through the process and it records it, it tracks it. So we know who completes it. It's how we do the annual training for sexual harassment and workplace violence.
And then, and we also have some trainings that are resuming in person. So that's happening next week, I think, starting next week.
I think we should schedule this for its own work session at some point. Are we, are the three of us ready to do that now or should we wait for our two absent partners?
I think we need to wait for our absent partners, although, because I don't think we should do it at a regular work session. I think we should do it the way we're doing the budget work sessions and have a separate. So, but maybe let's decide to do it and then circulate some dates.
Let's move then that we will, that we will let me move that we will set a separate work session for the recommend, recommended changes to the ethics rules, I guess, from the ad hoc committee. And we will set that date at a later time. And Mr. Carson, you'd be available, your people would be available to participate in that?
If you give us the, the date that you have in mind, assuming that it does not conflict with calendars, then of course we'll, we'll attend. Mostly tie you can give us, or perhaps a couple of alternative dates would be very helpful. So my co-committee members can attend. I think if we had a critical mass of a couple of them, of the six, that would be great. And if I may be presumptuous enough to make a suggestion.
Sure.
What I had in mind was that the trustees perhaps would read the final report. And then perhaps in advance, send to us the questions, comments, criticisms that individual trustees had, such as Dan Ash has pointed out. And thank you, Dan, for your comments. We would then be prepared to explain to you why we made certain provisions in the proposed code, what our thinking was, what our rationale was. And that might make the next session or the session that you plan more efficient. And and I would emphasize that we were committee making recommendations. The trustees, of course, are the legislators that enact the code. I'd also say that we think it's very important that wherever you wind up on the code, that it would be, I think, helpful for the village to retain a bill writer, someone who does this for a living, so that you've created a, as bulletproof, a code insofar as language and legal compliance as possible. And I say that because in my reading of the code, our reading of the code, there we found a lot of inconsistencies in terms of the use of language terms. And a number of places where I pointed out in the report, I felt there were phrases and words used that would not stand legal scrutiny if they were challenged. So a bill writer who was familiar with enacting or writing laws that say legislature passes would be, I think, a good final filter for whatever code you came up with.
You know, I think that, I just want to thank the committee. I hosted their Zoom meetings. And so I tried not to interject, but I know how hard they worked. And, and I just, I really want to thank them. And I think our code is different. Our code as it stands now and probably as it stands after even we make changes is different from other communities. And so the training that's provided by the state, while it's good, doesn't hit all of the benchmarks we need. So I think once we work with somebody who can help get a training that's ready specifically for the village, then the annual training won't be so hard. It's just getting it done right the first time. We've only had an ethics training, I mean, once since I was a trustee, and I don't think they ever did it before that. So, and it was the state doing kind of this, the training for the state code, which is only a portion of our code. So I just want to thank the Ad Hoc Ethics Committee for all their persistence.
Extraordinary amount of work is evident in the report. So we thank you for that. I see our, our HR directors here. Danielle, what's your, what's your feeling as to where this should end up with the, with the staff? I mean, is that something that you're capable of handling or is that?
So I'm kind of coming in late on the meeting, but if it's regard to training, you know, I do training in a couple of different fashions dependent upon the situation, but I am moving toward doing in-person training and dependent upon the subject. Either I can present it or I can find someone to present it for us. And if I, when I do my training, I have a list of everyone that's supposed to, to take the training, I check off, meaning I have a kind of a sign-in sheet to confirm that whoever said they were coming to a particular training, I usually have multiple days and times. I ask for a roster, I present, I prepare a sign-in sheet so people can sign in with their name. And if someone misses that training, I will develop an online platform. So at least that compliance part is done on my end.
You know, let's, let's just decide, the three of us, that we will, we will consider this in a separate work session. TBA. And when would we do that? Would we have to do it in a regular session or can we, can we set that date in a work session? I mean,
I think we can set that date through like a doodle. I mean, I think we don't have to have a meeting to set a date. So maybe if I, if maybe Dan Sarnoff and I could work on some dates and we can circulate them and we'll pick dates that work for, you know, the trustees and enough of the Ad Hoc Ethics Committee and Danielle, because Danielle is going to have to probably implement the training.
Yes. So, because I mean, you know, I'll put my two cents in, I think it needs to be put in a, in a format that can divorce the findings from personality and and that sort of thing. And I think, I don't think the Board should necessarily directly be involved in that part of it. But let's, let's, let's agree, we will we will have a separate work session. I move that we have a separate work session scheduled perhaps in, in May. And we will, we will address that, make sure that all the participants can, can attend. Is that, is that a motion that anyone will second?
Second.
Okay.
I think it's a great motion. I would just say May or early June, just in case dates don't work out, because we've had problems before.
All right, so moved. I'll second. All in favor? All right, there we go. All right.
Thanks, Dan and Danielle.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, next is rental registration program.
That would be. Excuse me, I just want to, you know, Bob is running late. I know he had some comments. Is it possible to postpone this item until a bit later when he, when he's on the call?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to postpone this till later today?
Yes, yeah, but, but he's just running late. He's driving back from the city, so.
Okay, and we're waiting for whom now, please?
Robert.
Your village attorney.
Yeah, all right, we're doing this without him. All right, there we go. All right, so that's, that will hold, hold that one. 1D. Planning projects, no, it's on for April 25th regularly. Okay, yeah, it's a regular on for the April 25th meeting. Zoning strategies to encourage and support all affordable housing development. Completion and comprehensive plan update, development moratorium for properties in C1, C2 zoning districts located in a federally mapped flood plain. We want to simply put that on the, on the, the agenda in two weeks? What do you want to talk about?
You know, we have Neil here, we have our planner here, he's in the waiting room. We have the planner who's been working on this, so we might want to.
Yeah. Neil was supposed to give us a outline for consideration to move forward, and we have not yet received that. So if Neil can give us a quick update, that would be helpful.
No, he did give us. So we do have, we do have the proposal for the comp plan. What we don't have is the proposal for the moratorium. We have the proposal for the comp plan to complete the plan.
Hello.
Hi, Neil.
Hi. So I did, I do have, as Dan has posted on the agenda, the streamlined version of the update and completion of the comprehensive plan. And just briefly in highlights, you know, I took trustee to four suggestion and other suggestions to streamline the, the process. And I, and if you, if you look at the, the proposal, the memo, highlighted in yellow are the sections that I believe we should focus on, which is the sustainability, residential neighborhoods, land use and develop. Now, there's, I, for the other sections, for example, transportation systems, municipal parks and recreation, I do want to provide the committees or other relevant persons the opportunity to mark up the November 2020 draft, which was latest version, to be able to reflect any changes and things. And, you know, we could certainly enter those in. So while in terms of the substances focus, are those four sections I mentioned? And as far as more kind of process update by staff and trustees or trustee liaisons are several of the other sections. There are a few other sections, for example, historic preservation was a short section. I currently say leave alone. You know, if there's a appropriate committee that, you know, would like to review that, I can certainly, you know, we can certainly do that, of course. And so the, the, the budget, I think, is now 22,500. And I, if there are any questions about this, I'll be happy to answer that. And then I can tell you more about the moratorium proposal.
Dan?
Yeah, Neil, that's very helpful. One comment is, I think, not only do we need to leave it posted on the website, but we need to indicate that people who wish to comment are, you know, certainly common during the period of, you know, we're moving forward. I don't want to have people feel that they're excluded because they don't happen to serve on a particular land use or other, you know, ad hoc committee that's directly involved with one of the sections. I think that they need to have the ability to make any comments they want, you know, eventually go to a hearing anyway. We should make it available to let them, you know, make your comments as we are moving forward.
Absolutely. We can post the November 2020 draft, we can, we can post for members of the public to also view and comment on.
And, and I do think that especially with parks and rec, there have been a number of personnel changes on the, on the boards and committees. So I think, like, giving them a chance to look through it would be helpful as well.
All right, you want to fill us in on the moratorium?
Yes, so it's, so if you recall, the previous moratorium study, I brought in Urban Partners, a Philadelphia firm, and Jim Hartling was the gentleman who, who, who came up with the calculations behind the redevelopment scenarios. So he's semi-retired, but he does pick and choose what he wants to work on. And he was happy to work on this along with his current, along with Chris Lankin now, who is the staff person currently at Urban Partners, who assisted on the, the first moratorium study. And so I do have, I do have a draft memo prepared with, and it'll follow a fairly similar trajectory as the prior moratorium study in terms of the scope of work. Redevelopment scenarios, the fiscal and social impact, socioeconomic impact assessments, and the traffic impacts assessments, excuse me, assessments. And I, I have a draft memo. I'm just waiting for a budget number from our traffic group. So I apologize for the delay in getting this to you, but I do have a draft prepared and I could, I could, I mean, you don't, you don't have, you don't have it on your screen right now, so I can't really, we can't really talk about it in any detail, but I, I can certainly send it to Mr. Sarnoff as soon as, probably tomorrow, as soon as I have the, the numbers that I can fill in and any additional scope materials.
Also, I think, Also, I think, you know, we've gotten a lot of comments on this agenda item today. And I know that it's really Tom's item, so I think, you know, we. Make any decision today because I think he's going to want input. That's really, he's the one that raised this. But it's it's limited to the C one and C two. We've gotten several comments from people. Who would like it to be extended to other residential areas. But I and I I completely understand that because residents, you know, single and two-family residential areas. Which surround these commercial districts were were very significantly hit during the flood. How much different would that study be?
Well, I believe in the last study, I do have, actually, I did put a. I have a map actually in the in the proposal, which is on my screen right now, of course. And and I do, I did notice the RM three, the the RM three districts. During the prior moratorium study, we did look at the R four. But I think the the main distinction that at least, well, I'll I'll certainly let the mayor speak for himself when he's available to. Was the the infill housing provision. And, you know, where there's currently, it's it's a commercial zoning district, C one and C two. And through the infill housing overlay, there is potential to to build multifamily housing in this district. And the concern was creating new development, which potentially puts. Which potentially increases the cost of services, emergency services, potentially puts people in harms way. And so I think in terms of if if there's interest in expanding it. That's possible, but I think I I do know, for example, there is a property. That has an application. It's right in front of Columbus Park where there is a a small building that is going to be converted into a. Into a potentially into into a apartment building. And I noticed that, and that's in the RM three, because one in in my conversations with Jim, I I had forgotten that that district is not. Commercial, but I said, well, you know, technically speaking, if you're if you're building a new building in place of the current building. From a, you know, it's it's potentially alleviating and to some degree. Because we built a floodplain regulations above above base flood, a base flood elevation. Not notwithstanding, of course, you are, you know, the there's other factors that go into that. But we but but I remember then that that property is not within the the C one. Where you're converting commercial into multifamily. So but to answer the the question and then along with what I, I mean, it's it's quite possible to extend that to include the RM three. It'll just be a little bit more calculations and than than the than what I currently have in the proposal.
Dan?
Yeah, Neil, that's helpful. I think. Other than just talking about C one, C two, RM three or RM four. I think part of the issue in which the flood committee brought up is anything in the floodplain. Which is is a different concept than whether you're in the RM three or four or, you know, when C one or C two. It's a different. It's a different approach to the same issue. You know, because the the concerns they were having and had has to do with emergency services. You know, et cetera, et cetera. And that that. Doesn't resonate in terms of specific zone because properties can, you know, be in two zones or et cetera. So that's one thing. The other thing. And I've had problems with other, not suggesting your studies, but other studies that have concerned themselves, quote, with traffic. The emphasis has been on. Vehicle traffic as opposed to pedestrian traffic. And there is a big concern in this village of making pedestrian crossings and pedestrian. Ways meaningful and much safer. And they that seems to have been. Sort of a minor aspect of what people have looked at in the past. You know, the the concerns that I hear is, well, if you do this, the traffic is going to be, you know, take longer to get from A to B and C to C. And so there needs to be some type of equilibrium for keeping traffic reasonably moving. But maybe not fast moving because everybody's complaining that people are speeding, you know, between, you know, between lights, if you will, or to make the next. So maybe Bill, you know, we need to look at, maybe we need red lights, if you will, and four-way stops or things like that. To allow traffic to move, but also make it safe for pedestrians and have some type of equilibrium between the two.
Right, I I would agree, and that's, you know, that's that's a whole traffic engineering conundrum now where everything's based on level of service. Which is very unilaterally about vehicles. I think that I think the methodology can be adjusted and I can work with the the traffic engineer to. To. To create a scope that's more balanced and not single-handedly about vehicle congestion. But factors in safety for pedestrians and bicycles and other 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 users besides cars.
So but I'd like is if you could do that and extend it to the floodplain, if you will, i.e. areas that are known to flood. Because that.
You're talking about the what he'll do during the moratorium, right?
That's correct. I I E. Instead of just simply saying C one, C two. There is some overlap in floodplain and then there's areas that are not overlapped in floodplain, which is great. I think that, you know, that that needs to be come forward. But there are lots of areas that are flooding, you know, in, you know, the area that we've been concerned about of recent date. That aren't in the C one, C two.
Just so we need, we need to, we need to define that, the area, first of all, and I we're going to have to wait for Tom on this. But I hear what you're saying because i- if that area near the park is not included, we need to probably address that.
And well, I think we have to wait for Tom on it. I think there are questions we can ask, so because I think I I think can anticipate. And so one is that, you know, Tom's really interested in doing the C one and C two. And that's what our moratorium is about, the proposed moratorium law is C one and C two. And but but I think a lot of residents who support this are interested in having like a pause. In the residential districts that Dan was talking about. But that's not infill housing. It's a different, it's a different kind of zoning. So I guess my question to Neil is, are they different kinds of studies? And is it better to? You know, I mean, if if all we're looking at is. A consideration of infill housing, then. You know, in the C one and C two, are we better at looking at the, I mean, I'm looking at the zoning map. There's RM two, there's, you know, there's two family, there's three family all around it. Are we better off at looking at floodplain studies in in like, are we better off compartmentalizing them? I'm also knowing that six weeks ago, and I don't think we've done an RFP episode, six weeks ago. We, the board of trustees decided to use some of our. The money that we got from COVID relief to underwrite studies in the flood zones. Just figure out, you know, how, you know, to sort of get, do some engineering work so we could try and figure out how we can. Drain some of the flood zones when it rains. So are the, is it, I mean, it just seems to me like. It's such a, they're they're both a huge, together, they're a really big project and they seem to be different parts of a different, different parts of a similar project. But I don't know, like, maybe the methodology is to do them separately.
Could I share my screen for a minute? Okay, let's see, share. So this is the map I put in the proposal, if it's if it's fairly clear to you, I I don't know. But this is the original map. The the only part I didn't show is a post road that goes further south. But, you know, this was the era we studied within the within the prior moratorium study. So we did do the R four and so and the floodplain covers. So in a sense, we've 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 done everything already. Of course, the numbers would have to be updated, the property assessments and market values and such, since it was done two two years ago. But we essentially did the build-out analysis for the entire floodplain. Except for the RM three district, sorry, we're not not including single-family zones. But the only pieces that we did not include were the RM threes on the west and east side of the Mariner Avenue. So, you know, from a methodology standpoint, we've we we do have all the data already. We do have scenarios for Washingtonville of the different, I forget what the color coding means. I don't have the legend on here. But if if it's a matter of adding RM, the RM three zones, that would be, look at the, that would look at all the multifamily. C one with infill, C one, C two with infills zoning, infill housing overlay. The R four and the, and we will just need to add the RM three districts.
How much time do you need to do all that?
Depend on the calculations wise, I think we have, we have all the spreadsheets. I saved everything from the previous moratorium study. Which helps in terms of efficiency. However, they they would need to be updated, the numbers. And and so I I who I'd have to, I have to look back at at the schedule we had for the prior moratorium study. It took, I mean, the process took about a year for the for the for the moratorium study, but it had a lot of elements. And it did, you know, did kind of take on a life of its own. I I can, I can provide, I think what I will do is provide a, what I should do in this draft proposals also include. First, modifications based on trustee Natchez's suggestions about pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Whatever you decide about the areas to, if there's any interest in including other areas. And then a timeline, so it can give you a sense of how how long this would all take.
So, I mean, I don't want to put words in Tom's mouth, but, you know, Tom wants to stick to C one and C two. And I think, you know, his mind might change after he's read some of the comments and and but. Again, if we're thinking about it as an evaluation of zoning, the zoning, the zoning is different. So a C one, C two change would be different from the other zoning changes. So maybe in thinking about it, it could be, I'm glad that a lot of the work's already been done, but maybe it could be like done sequentially.
I would say the traffic part, if if there was interest in expanding it. Beyond C one and C two. That would mean more intersections to examine with a longer traffic, traffic study process. So basically, it wouldn't be, in all, the project wouldn't be as compact, but that's that's just what what it is. Because it would be focused on C one and C two, so really looking at three intersections primarily along Mariner, Mariner Avenue. Maybe four at Halsted and and on Halsted.
My concern with this discussion right now. And I know the flood committee has been, which is where the moratorium. Came from a few months ago. I think we need to try and do an overlay, you know, in terms of floodplain administration, you know, and for zoning. There are areas that are single-family or two-family that are built in the floodplain. The question is, you know, what should we, what should the future hold? Should we have encouraged them to be raised? Should we prevent them from being, you know, new new things being done? You know, just at the FEMA level, which in I'd approve to be. Way under. You know, if people who fight raise their houses according to FEMA still flood. So I think we need to take a a more holistic view to that and, you know, along with infilled housing and C one, C two. If you do that, if you do the C one, C two in the overlay of the floodplain. Ninety, all of the area that you've shown is there, and then there's some additional area that you would be heading. But you would be adding it more from a floodplain. Then, you know, in development, et cetera.
And that would be include. Well, would that include, that would be primary only residential properties in the floodplain or or also commercial properties?
Would be any, anything you built. That that's really what you're talking about. It doesn't do any good to build something that is going to, you know, be flooded.
Well, I mean, but but the 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 truth is, what floods now might not flood later when we actually do something about the flooding.
You gotta gotta read the court, the the court study because why it will help. There's no question it will help. It's not going to stop flooding. Why? And and what it does is reduces the level, but if you take a look at.
I don't know, I I I get that, but but we're talking about the the Army Corps Plan. We're talking about the emergency cleaning of the rivers that we are about to begin. And and a number of other things we can undertake to actually address the flooding, which is, which is the the issue here. I mean, I like that moratoriums are fine, but 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 what are we doing in in that time? And what are we, what are we trying to to ascertain? I mean, that's 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 the question. I mean, how much time do you need to to do this study, Neil?
Now, now with with which scenario in terms of the expanse? Because this, that's a, that's a big project to, with a lot of public process that would be involved, probably more than just like a. Moratorium study in some ways, if you're looking at, you know, the future of what you can do in in the flood zone for for residential properties. That that's a much larger. Take a a larger, you know. Scope and and objective and and process because you're you're getting into the residential neighborhood. So. You know, I think this, you know, if you're, if if this original potential moratorium, C one, C two. That's compact and I don't know, maybe potentially, just hypothetically speaking, you know. Let's say it takes about three months to complete. The the moratorium study for the C one and C two. Maybe that's something that could be, that process could be something to inform, looking at the rest of the floodplain.
That's, I mean, because, you know, I'm I'm, I told Tom, I'm willing to go along with this. But not an indefinite moratorium because essentially it's a de facto moratorium in in parts of that that area already. I mean, I've been there three years and I'm seeing, you know, two and a half-year-old zoning signs just sitting there, you know. Collapsing into the soil, so we we we're already there on a on a de facto moratorium. So let's, I would say, let's 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 keep it limited and. And 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 see what, if you're going to come up with it in three months on C one and C two, I think that would be my my inclination.
Well, I, you know, I don't disagree that keeping it limited, you know, this, because this is sort of like a world hunger project. I mean, you know, we're not, we're not going to be able to solve flooding in the Village of Amerenik, even with this Army Corps Plan. It's going to mitigate flooding. And so if we take on something that's too big, we simply, we simply run the risk of not getting it done. But on the other hand, one of the things about the about. Eliminating infill housing in the commercial district is that housing has to be elevated according to FEMA. So that the floodwaters can go underneath. Commercial properties don't. They can be made floodproof like with gates like they have at the Ry Y. So you end up with kind of different. Flooding, you end up with different kinds of buildings. If you allow residential versus commercial or both. And so. You know, that's going to be one of the factors that the consultants look at. So I I do think that there are a lot of residents who want this moratorium to be larger. So I I just, if if it if it's not going to be larger, I just want to address it now. I don't want, you know, I don't want surprises. I want to have like a real conversation about how we decided to to do this moratorium. And how we decided to evaluate what's going to be there. I mean, this is not, this is a problem long, long, long time in coming and it's not going to be a quick fix.
Sorry, Nora, you're talking about the sufficiency, the part of the moratorium study is the sufficiency of. Sorry, Nora, you're talking about the sufficiency, the part of the moratorium study is the sufficiency of the existing floodplain development regulations for both commercial. And residential properties?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because with, with, with the residential property, you have to elevate. So the parking's beneath and you know, you might lose some cars and people may be stranded, but they are hopefully above the water. With commercial properties, if you look at the AMP or, you know, the Brixmore site. That's, you know, that's a site that flooded again, because commercial properties need to be made floodproof. And so that's just, it, it's just a difference in the physical buildings and a flood. You know, a building that's elevated allows the water to pass through. A building that's not elevated, that's floodproof, stops the water, maybe. And may reroute the water to other buildings.
Exactly.
So that's, you know, those are very different results with different kinds of development.
Right. And that's what I was getting at when I mentioned the, the applications for the multifamily building in front of Columbus Park. It's going to be built to floodplain standards and be elevated. So you, you know, so it's a different building type. Uh, it, it's essentially technically, technically putting people out of harm's way, though, though, though not entirely, of course.
Right. Because if you are, if you have an emergency and, and emergency vehicles can't get you, you might be high and dry and not necessarily in a good way. You know, you're out of the immediate danger of the water, but you're not able to get into that ambulance that you need to get into.
All right, um.
So I.
We're gonna, I guess we're gonna have to wait on this because uh, would we uh, or, or you, I, I, I'm not in the mood to expand it. Right now. Are you?
Well, last week you didn't even want it. So you're right. So.
What was that?
Last week you didn't even want it. So you.
Well, I know, well, you know what? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to listen. I'm trying to listen and I understand. And, and I've seen the same comments you have, Laura. So uh, so I. Uh, yes, if it, if there's a, if it sunsets, if we, if we know what we're, why we're pausing it. Uh, fine, but if it's just going to be a, a policy paralysis where we're not doing anything because we're afraid to do anything. Or we don't know what to do, then it's just not a good idea. So that, that's, that's where, where I am. And you've got these, these abandoned buildings, I, I mean, or empty buildings, not abandoned. Uh, uh, sitting all over the place is starting to look like a ghost town. It's just not a, it's just not a healthy, uh, healthy environment.
Well, Bob and Mark have drafted the law that C one and C two.
Mm hmm.
And um, you know, and Neil has started on a proposal with the instructions we gave him. And now we've confused him probably today or potentially. So you know, what, I guess, what, what more information do we want between now and two, two weeks from now?
I would suggest, you know, Neil, Neil can give a proposal. You know, for going both ways, if you want. Um, you know, with time parameters, I, I agree with Lou that we don't, I don't think anybody is looking just to put a moratorium on and just let it sit. Uh, but I do.
That, that, that is the, the, the trust I get from some of the comments and I understand the impulse, but I don't think we can do that.
No, just let, let me finish, Lou. Okay. I, you know, I think that, you know, we don't have to study to death the floodplain. But I think we need to understand how that interacts with, you know, what to be, be doing. Should you be raising the houses, you know, uh, you know, when the buildings, you know, should, um, does the commercial, should the commercial be allowed? Not be flood proof if you pose to uh raised. Um, should we change, give an incentive to raise houses so that if you were a two story? And that's what you're limited to, you know, under the zoning. Uh, you know, the footage that you are given a pass to raise it a little bit. Those are the types of things that. In my mind, does not require months and months and months of study and lots of calculations. It's here are the options. And I think that's what we're really looking for. Here are the options, board, you decide what you want uh in type of thing. And that can be done, you know, all due respect, in a relatively short period of time. The infield housing on C one and C two, I think is a major part of that. Uh, but I think just looking at the comments today, then looking at what the floodplain uh committee came up with, you know. Started the moratorium issue. Um, and uh, and they have very specific concerns, pro and con of what to do with. Such things as the proposal and the, the small building which um Neil has referred to. Uh, not, not because of that application, but the concept of the application. And I think that's what we need to concentrate on is, you know, what do you want to move to? Because if you don't do that, you know, you, you're going to continue to have more of the same. You're going to have, you know, problems, um, and not, not that it's solvable, but you're going to have more and more problems.
And I, so what do we, what do we want to do, guys? Uh, I, I, we put it off uh for the regular meeting in, in two weeks? Is that, is that how?
Yeah, but I, I think I'd like to see nails, you know, a proposal from Neil going both ways.
Um, is that a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion. I, I don't think we need, we can, you know, we can do it by consensus if you want, whatever, however you'd like to do it.
Uh, Neil, is that, is that something that, that will, you can do easily that won't, won't overly complicate this?
Because I think. Uh, I think the easier, the easy part will be, well, I mean, if I'm using the same methodology. I think there's, there's some fundamental questions that, you know, that every town that has this issue has to grapple with, which is what we're, which the village is grappling with. Um, you know, do, do you, you know, what, what do you allow people to do? What are the incentives? Some places they bought out properties and, and so um, if we're still going with this methodology. I'm thinking the methodology for C one and C two is, is fairly, you know, simple mathematical traffic studies in this. Um, but ultimately, uh, I think, I think the methodology for expanding it. To the more expanded area, meaning the entire floodplain. Um, I, I, it'll be a little, I mean, it's, it's going to be a little bit more, uh, it's going to be more. Um, you know, I think the questions that Dan poses, uh, trustee Natchez poses were good ones. I just feel like it's, it would have to take a, 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 a different methodology than, than the limited area possibly. Um, uh, I just need to, I needed, I would, I wouldn't be able to, basically, I wouldn't be able to give you a extended. The full on floodplain proposal, you know, in, in, in a few days, I need to really kind of think about that and uh. Um, and, and see how, how that would work out, unless you, you wanted a similar methodology.
Um, well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we uh, that we um. Deal with the C one and C two, a moratorium proposal that, that we have on our plates here. I'll put that on for two weeks and then if we want to in the, in the work session. Um, that uh, that same day, earlier that day, if we want to discuss expanding it with the full board, then we can do that. Uh, but I don't think we should do it. I don't think the three of us should, should expand it, but now it's just going to slow things down. And uh, and we don't know what, what the uh.
Lou, that's one of the reasons I'm asking for two different proposals. We don't have a pro, proposal yet for the C one, C two. Neil is almost finished with uh being able to provide. He's heard a lot of comments. He may be able to come up with something in two weeks. And that, that could help outline, you know, what, whether we want to go on both courses or one course or no, no courses.
I all.
Crystallize the discussion.
All right, I, I hear it.
I also, I, I, I'm also thinking that um. I, I want to know, you know, what the status of the stu-, you know, the flood engineering studies that we asked for are. I mean, maybe, maybe we're, I don't know if it's, I don't know what the schedule is going to be, whether we have to wait till we have this funding or whether we're going to start the RFP process. But there has also been that Neil may not know about. Um, there's going to be a substantial redo of, there's a repaving of Mariner Avenue. And so the, and that, and the county owns Mariner Avenue from um white plains to basically the railroad bridge. And so um, there are going to be some changes made to those intersections. And so there's studies done there. So that might be factored in. So it might be kind of three thoughts, like the C one, C two, and then the remaining part of the floodplain. But that the traffic studies would be one, because it's kind of one area, one set of traffic signals. And some of it may already have been done, because we've been doing these walking assessments and the county did some studies. So maybe we need to get that to Neil too.
Yeah, I, I can talk to Neil separately about some of the uh, traffic items we're working on, the CDBG grants we've received. Uh, I did have a question. I don't want to belabor the point, but you know, part of the item plan is the completion of the comprehensive plan. Do you want to treat that as a discrete item and move forward on that while we still wait for the second? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
That'd be good to, to get that checked off.
That one we'll, we'll put on for the, the 25th with the boards.
Right.
Yeah, consensus.
Yeah, thanks.
Now, as far as the zoning strategies, do you want to talk more about that or, or uh? Another time. The third uh, item on, under the.
Yeah, um. I, I think we have to wait. And I'm, well, there's three of us here. I think we need to wait.
Well, Victor's here. Victor is, I see Victor.
Victor is here?
Yeah, I, but I mean, you know, it is something that, I mean, it's, it's something Tom put on. I mean, obviously we're not going to make a decision tonight. So I, you know, it's a, it's a big issue if, if, you know, if Neil has some. If he, if he wants to throw out some ideas we should have been thinking about for the next two weeks.
Uh, well, I think, uh, well, I mean, there is a little bit of, uh, you know. Overlap in terms of this moratorium study. If, if, if in the future you're looking at infill housing or if you, you know, at least what came up when I was talking with the village manager and, and Mr. Sarnoff. Is the concept of a affordable housing overlay. Um, which I believe is, is, is something that might have come for the trustees, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you know, that has some, the, the, the work we do, clearly, you know, if you're. You know, whatever you, the infill housing overlay is something that, you know, you could hypothetically see an overlay being. Placed on a certain properties or areas of the C one or C two, where you might apply this, this overlay. Uh, and you'll be coming against the question of development and floodplains through that means as well. Um, you know, putting, and that's, that's a question, but I think really I just wanted to find out. Uh, eventually, it doesn't have to be now, um, whether you're looking at a very specific, uh, a specific zoning strategy, this affordable housing overlay concept. Um, or are you looking at a kind of a more broader thing that includes zoning? But also other strategies uh that are kind of programmatic uh in terms of affordable housing. Um, and so that's, that's just a general, general question. Uh, you, which, which for you to think about. I think there was an article that was on one of the agenda items associated with that, which had some uh suggestions for what other, other things the village can do beyond zoning. Uh, to allow people to stay in affordable housing. And so the, so the question is, um, you know, is there a need for a broader uh, uh, strategy? Um, or is there uh, something, or is there, is there a commitment to focus on one or two specific zoning strategies and, and try to move forward with those?
Okay.
Well. You have three different things here. All right. So uh, that, I, I think with affordable housing, we need to look at everything.
Right.
The concert comprehensive plan certainly dovetails with that.
Right. And so in the comprehensive plan, without a doubt, I think on a very uh, basic level uh is a place where you can start to. Um, uh, just put into place certain uh recommendations or certain things that the village should consider. Um, and so that, that is a place, and that's why the land use and development section is going to be one of the four areas that. Uh, we, we focus on specifically, because I think there, there needs to be a little bit more teased out in the, in the write up about affordable housing. I think there's more to be said in there and that could help, you know, uh, influence the, the way, the path that the village would like to go.
All right. So these uh, these items will all uh. Roll on for April 25th then, right?
Yep.
Okay. And, and we're not tinkering with them in any way.
Now.
Now, right. Okay, great. Do we need to, do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We're good, I think.
As I mentioned, it's my second meeting I'm sharing since uh high school. So this is a.
We've got a good team here.
Huh?
There's a good team here.
All right. Thank you very much, Neil. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks. Take care.
Thanks, Neil.
Okay, I, I see that, that Mr., I saw Mr. Spalding was here. Oh, yeah, yes, yeah. So let's go back to the um. Rental registration program.
Sure. So I gave you a lot of material in your packet.
Um, it was homework.
It'll be a test um when I'm finished.
Yeah, thanks.
So what happened was we started doing research on this. And as you may recall, this is a law that um Jerry essentially imported from the community in which he worked in New Jersey. So I knew there were laws like this rental registration laws in New York. I thought it'd be a good idea to take a look at them. And I came across a couple, which I've included in your package. And one of them, the Southampton law, which has been around for a while. Um, has also been the subject of a legal challenge. So I thought maybe that would be the place to start, rather than try to craft the law from what had been done in New Jersey. To build on the law uh from New York, the, the, the one that had been uh withstood a challenge in New York. And then add some of the elements of the New Jersey law that were not part of. The uh, the New York laws, like the uh, the bond. When you have bad tenants, the requirement that you take a, take action. Land, the property owner or the landlord take action to stop whatever the offensive conduct is, those kinds of things. Uh, and so that's why I put it together this way, rather than head down a road you didn't want me to head down. Um, bring it up for discussion this way.
Anybody have any comments on that?
Um, can you sort of outline what the differences were in, you know, the substances that's different?
Well, the um, the two ideas that were in the New Jersey law. That um, the New York law didn't have. Was one, the, the uh specific landlord and tenant responsibilities. I didn't see that in the, the New York laws. And secondly, the bond where there has been an offensive conduct, repeated offensive conduct by the property. Those two concepts are not in the Southampton or uh other New York laws. The New York laws are basically rental registration laws. Um. And they go into a number of, they go into a lot of detail about how the program would work. That the New Jersey law does not. It's not as detailed about that. There are a couple of things that may or may not be of interest to you in the New York law, or at least in the Southampton law. One of which was duration, minimum duration of rentals. I don't know if you care. Uh, this was done before the concept of Airbnb. Uh, so I'm not sure how you want to approach that. But. The uh, the, the New York laws. Go into a whole lot of standards about how to define. Uh, property that is being used legally as a uh dwelling unit for a family. That's what is very complicated body of law on that. This one establishes indicia of what constitutes uh multifamily occupancy of what should be a one family dwelling unit. Um. To my eye, it looks like it, it. Captures the complexity of the law on the subject, you know, used to be. Uh, you know, there was a time 30 years ago or so, when the laws routinely said. That a single family dwelling had to be uh used by one or more persons related by blood or marriage. by one or more persons related by blood or marriage. And that definition went out the window in a case out of Long Island, I think it was called Village of Bel Air against Boris, thirty, thirty-five years ago. And since then, laws have tended to talk about living as the functional equivalent of a family, which is an amorphous concept. This puts some meat on those bones. It also deals with a lot of the timing issues that I was struggling with, to be honest, on the New Jersey law. Terms of permits, you have to, you have to get a permit before you rent. Can you rent before you get a, you have to register before you rent? Or can you rent and then register? And if you register in the middle of the year, is your permit good for the rest of the year, or is it good just till December? Or does it go for a two-year period from when you register? Those sorts of things. And this was a, I thought rather than my just come up with it on my own, this was a thought-through system that's had some, that's been tested over years. So that's why I suggested this.
And I I saw Jerry there. He popped on her off. So you're you're comfortable, you're comfortable with this, with the way it's structured, the the way you've given it to us. Obviously, you gave it to us. Jerry, any any feeling on it?
Lou, we have a we have a committee put together, an ad hoc committee put together, and what I could do is I could discuss it with them, so to give some time to go over the Southampton and the, what was the other one, Bob Patterson? Patterson.
Correct.
We can go over that and discuss it. We've been holding off on having another meeting until the Board of Trustees was presented with something from from Bob. But in my opinion, having created that that New Jersey structure, we really, the only thing I wanted to focus on as an elected official was to eliminate the hazards of over occupancy and landlords that are not fixing up their their properties, not having the proper electrical outlets near the water, like in the bathroom or or sink, making sure that smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors are in the properties, make sure the handrails. It's basically, we used it as an annual CO to make sure that the people who are renting the property were safe and that they weren't being abused by their landlord in any way. And the rental registration, there's fifty-five hundred rooftops in where I used to work, there's eighteen hundred rental properties, rental units. And so there's a lot of work, and what we did with the permit process was, it didn't matter when we renewed their their permit. It would just, every week, it would trigger off a a new series of renewals. So it didn't matter when someone registered. A year later, we would notify them and go re-inspect the property to make sure everything was above board. In fact, my property, because it's a rental property in New Jersey, is inspected annually. And they just make sure that everything's working properly. It takes ten minutes for a a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath house to make sure that everything looks and seems like it's in working order.
And this is revenue neutral, the 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 fees cover the
Uh-uh, no, make money on it.
Okay, well, I like that.
Revenue positive. Everything I try to present is revenue positive.
But, I mean, how many staff members would it require?
They have one thirty-hour employee. He does eighteen hundred rental units a year.
Right, but so for us, that we have more than that, right?
Probably have, I don't think double, Nora, but we probably have one and a half, so maybe twenty-five hundred or so rental units. So we'll need a full-time employee to do that.
So just so you're aware, the law in New York may be different than the law in New Jersey on this subject. In New York, you can't require an inspection as a condition of registration. I don't know what the situation is in New Jersey. The only way you can do, there are only two ways you could have, you could inspect the interior. And as I mentioned in my memo, this may have been the distinction that the building department was operating under when it said that they only inspect the common areas. You can always inspect areas that are open to the public within a building. But when you get to private areas like apartments, you can only inspect either with the consent of the occupant or with a search warrant.
And we had.
A search warrant, you have to have proper cause.
We established the consent of the occupant and the landlord. We would go through the property, there would be scheduled appointments. And this individual would have scheduled appointments, and both the landlord and the tenant would go through the property and make sure.
I don't understand, these are not, I mean, are the are the inspections required or not? If they're required, how can they be option? I don't know, I mean.
Well, there's a, there's a Fourth Amendment interest here. Pride Fourth Amendment right to be free of unreasonable searches and seizures element to this. And so they they can't be required as far as a condition of getting a permit to rent.
So we could do, we could enact this law and not be in any different situation than we're in now.
Right, although Jerry's saying that people did consent, so maybe.
They did, because they wanted, they used it as a, they used it as a as a tool to demonstrate to the tenant that the property has been inspected and it's in good shape. I use it, I use it in my case as well. My tenant wants to know how the inspection, in fact, I think, Bobby, if you saw that, the law is required that I have to give my tenant a copy of the approval cert of, or this, the certificate, so that they have it. They can't just send it to me because I'm paying the bill. They have to have a copy of the certificate.
But if you didn't, if you didn't consent, could you still rent your house out?
Yeah, I could.
Yeah.
But I would be in violation.
No, I mean, what Bob is saying is we can't require people to consent, so we can't put people in violation if we can't require them to consent.
Right, well, you know. So, I mean, that's, that's the difference. If that's, if that's a difference, it it may be that we that we don't do something like this, but I I know for a fact, and I can tell you stories, and I'm sure others, especially the fire department and police department can tell you stories about some of the properties and the condition that they're in, and that's where the concern is. Unless we go there because someone's injured, or it, there was a fire, we don't know that the property is, you know, in deplorable condition.
No, I I understand. It's just that if we, if we can't require people to do inspections, it seems like this isn't going to be our solution.
Where where are the teeth in it? How can you, how can you compel compliance?
We didn't have a problem, but what ended up happening was the public was aware that they needed to register their rental and they needed to be inspected. And so it just, it just grew from there. As far as people, you know, working around the law, I know we have a couple of experts around here, but the truth is, you know, a lot of people will want to make sure that their property, if I'm renting an apartment, I want to make sure my property is is in good shape.
So you you think this is a good idea?
I know it's a good idea. The problem is if it can, if it flies. I know it's a good idea. I just don't know if it flies. That's why I handed it off to Bob and Mark for their, you know, interpretation of it. What was the challenge in Southampton, Bob? You can't tell me what to do with my property?
Yeah, there were a whole lot of challenges to it.
Yeah.
The basic, the big challenge was, you can't make me register my property, you can't tell me what to do.
And that was defeated?
Yes.
So people have to register their properties. But they don't have to have their property inspected.
Correct.
Oh, I wasn't just looking for a a revenue generator, although I do that all day long. I was looking for, you know, the ability to make sure we inspect properties. Because we don't know, we don't, we don't know who has, who has illegal apartments, who has divided up apartments, we just don't know.
You don't have ESP, right?
Yeah, I don't know, we don't know, of course.
So what, what does our code one twenty-six eleven do? It's it's for dormitories and for public spaces, but it's.
It's, that's right.
And multiple dwellings, but.
Three or more.
So we can now inspect properties with three or more, whether they're registered?
I don't think you can.
Okay.
Shouldn't say that. I think the same first, Fourth Amendment restriction applies to those.
Okay. Just because we passed a law doesn't mean we should have.
You don't, you don't, you can supersede a lot of things, but you can't supersede the Fourth Amendment.
What what's the what's the penalty but not registering?
Oh, I forget what it was in Jersey, I could look it up.
No, I mean, what would it be for us? Do we have any means of enforcing? I mean, it just seems like if it's, if it's an unenforceable law, what, you know, I don't know.
We have this standard penalty that we use, which is two hundred and fifty dollars a day. We, we have that in a lot of different areas, a lot of different sections of the code. So let's use that as an example. You know, if you, if you don't register, the penalty would be two hundred and fifty dollars, and each day constitutes a a new penalty. I don't know. That sounds pretty aggressive, but I'm okay with collecting penalties too, not just fees.
Jerry, what's what's our local court done with that in terms of enforcing that?
They're fifty-fifty split from the days that I've been in court. Sometimes they sometimes they excuse it, and sometimes they make a deal. So for instance, I had a individual who had a sidewalk cafe out for twenty days, so I was looking for the full twenty times two fifty, and ended up that we settled, you know, the court asked the village to consider, we settled that a thousand dollar fine for putting out, you know. So I want to be heavy-handed, but we have judges who are you know, very considerate, and and they work in this community, they have to live in this community too, I get it, I get it.
All right. Put this on for the for meeting in two weeks?
If you think, if you think there's some value to it, but, you know, if you're not gonna, if we're not gonna be able to
So.
Enforce.
Well, I'm asking the 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 board.
If we can't require inspections, it seems like there's minimal use, but is, Jerry, do you think it's something that's worth running by your committee?
I can, except I have to, I have to be, I have to be honest with them and tell them, look, you know, this is what we have. I mean, I wouldn't want to get rid of it because I think we could make, I think we could do some good things with the fees that we collect, but you know, the reality is if we can't get into properties to make sure people are safe, that's really the objective that I want to I want to achieve. So I'll talk to them, we'll we'll call, I'll call a meeting together if you guys want me to. No, I recommend we we pull it off the agenda, let the committee meet, and then put it back on and and see if they want us to put it back on. If not, that was just an idea.
Dan, Victor, what do you think?
I think that's why we have this committee, right? I mean, we've got a bunch of stakeholders. And not every idea turns out to be practical.
No, the committee may want alternate solutions because they do see a concern and a problem. They may want alternate solutions, but what was it, Bob? What's the, what's holding me back from going to do inspections? Title what?
The Fourth Amendment.
Oh, the Fourth Amendment, oh, just a little thing called the Fourth Amendment. Yeah, right, yeah, so, you know, I mean, that's, that's our thing. You know, I want to make sure people are safe. But if I can't do that.
All right, let's, why don't you take it back to the committee and then and and let us know. All right, thank you. I I don't want to, I'm hoping we're moving along quick enough. I've been asked to take a couple of things out of order. Can we take something out of new business before we finish up old business, or is that permitted?
Yes.
Did you finish, you finished old business? Okay, good.
Finish our business, no, we didn't.
No, no, I'm talking about the on for the twenty-fifth meeting.
Which one?
There's a bunch of items on old business on for the twenty-fifth meeting.
Target after the twenty-fifth, most of them.
I gotta make sure that we discuss them today at the, on the eleventh, so that we can put them on.
All right, yeah, yeah, let's let's get, let's get through that, all right. Let's get down to Jay. Referral to planning board wireless edge application for recertification of special use permit, Fenimore Road Cell Tower.
Dan, thirty seconds, Dan.
The the owner or the operator of the site, you knew their permit, technically, the code says the responsible board approves it, and that would be the village court, for its property, but the planning board typically handles applications this type. They just did one for a site at sixteen hundred, also six hundred Harrison Avenue. So I'm recommending that the board refer this to them, let them do the review and make a recommendation back to the village board.
And what is the fees that we get for this?
I I can get that back to you tomorrow. I don't have the fees and charges scheduled. Are you talking about the fees that we get annually for the?
No, on this specific, there's a
Renewal.
Quest to, for renewal.
For renewal.
Specific, for a specific.
Get that to you tomorrow, Dan.
Yeah, I recall it was substantial. All right. Okay.
Well, the the planning board meets this week and in two weeks, so if we don't refer it tonight, they wouldn't do it for four weeks.
Yeah, and I did.
Right?
Yeah, I I spoke to Kathy, the chair of the planning board, to say, this is, this came in, I'm going to ask the board to refer to you, and first response was, we just did this for this place, we should not do it, so.
Okay.
All right. We'll put that on for the twenty-fifth then? Okay. Kay, Fireman's Carnival Parade.
Yeah.
About that?
Those dates. It's carnival, it's carnival dates and parade, it's a standard. We do this every year. Maybe we didn't do it once during COVID, but I don't remember when COVID was already, so.
It's just an annual resolution.
All right.
Yes, on for twenty-fifth.
Got it. That's on for the twenty-fifth then. Our, next is L, Arcadis proposal to raise village-owned manhole in New York thruway authority yard.
We have a manhole, Lou, we have a manhole in the New York State, the New York thruway authority yard located on Mamaroneck Avenue.
Yeah.
Right at the entrance between the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the entrance and and ninety-five, the entrance to ninety-five and ninety-five. It needs to be raised because they're using it as a a storage lot for soil, and there's infiltration of soil into our system. So it needs to be raised. Arcadis proposal is to do the engineering and make sure the project gets done properly. The thruway authority will pay for the construction.
Excellent, and and we're talking about simply, you know, like a, like a tube around it, right?
Thirty-two foot increase.
Okay, all right.
But we're responsible for the engineering fees.
They've asked us to, they've asked us to hire our engineer and pay for the engineering fees. And that's the split that they discussed.
I I understand, but and I am in favor of our engineer making sure it's done right and coming up with the specs, et cetera. But I believe, you know, there were violations of our local law by selling, you know, and you can, and that's also part in the flood plain. You know, so it's, there there are issues on on more than one of our laws. They should be paying for the whole thing.
Oh, there's a two fifty a day, Jerry.
Good luck with that, huh?
No, I, you know, if I I understand.
I think, so so I agree with Dan. I don't disagree with Dan. I think the reality is if we don't come up with a cost-sharing agreement on this, it won't get done, they don't care, and we do. And then I have to do it the hard way with the state, and you know I'm not going to get anywhere. So that's the problem.
We know what the amount is. Or is it, is this, we just have hourly rates, we don't have.
Looking at that, and Dan, Dan, can you look, are you in front of your computer? Can you look to see if there was a total, because I mean, I'm in front of my computer, but I thought that was in previous work sessions.
I I, there was never, I don't think there was ever a total.
Yeah, I mean, so they they say, they estimate about two weeks to do the work.
I know, but the salaries go from seventy-one dollars an hour to two sixty-six an hour, so.
Yeah. How about, how about we talk about an? How about, how about we talk about an, uh, not to exceed number that the board is comfortable with, or if it's just zero, then, then it's zero. I go back to them and say, you know, so, so if we, if we run a, a do not exceed number, then I can say, look, I only got this amount of money from the board to be able to do this. And then I can sit down with the, um, with the bosses, the foreman at the, uh, at the thruway authority and try to, uh, try to renegotiate.
What's your good number?
Get what? If I may, um, how about, uh, calculating what the cost would, what the fines would be for violating our various laws? And saying, we're willing to waive all that. You just pay for the whole thing.
Okay, I'll do that.
Or failing that, let's give you some wiggle room. Let's take the median salary and multiply it by
Eighty hours?
Eighty hours, like one, one thirty-two by eighty?
Yeah, I mean, it come, it comes out to about 12 grand, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I bet that's more than the fees that are fined. I don't know how many days, right? Depends on how many days.
Well, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta see when I was notified. I was notified when we were doing inspections of the, uh, we were doing inspections of the, uh, of the property.
Yeah, my, my general experience at the, yeah, they'll have a staff engineer or a senior engineer do the majority of the, of the design work and then the principal engineer will review it to make sure all the numbers add up and sign off on it.
Yeah, but Nor, Nora's, Nora's calculation is, is probably gonna be spot on easily. Um, so what we were doing, many of you know, we had, we had 22 manholes missing or unaccounted for. Um, when we started, uh, in, um, March of last year, uh, working with Save the Sound, I think it was 22. Bob, Bob might remember more. Um, and so we were looking for manholes and that's when we found this one. So that would be the date, uh, and I could probably tell you, uh, if I look up sewer foremans.
Missing manholes? I mean.
Oh, yeah. Unaccounted for. We couldn't find them, Lou.
You, you, you're not talking about the covers. You're talking about the actual, the actual hole?
I'm talking about the covers. I'm talking about manholes that we couldn't find that were either paved over in driveways or backyards, you know, grassed over backyards, you know, that kind of stuff.
Got it.
Um.
All right, um.
Yeah, we're going back to.
You have enough for us from that?
Yeah, we're going back to, um, let me see, we started looking for manholes, March 2nd, 2021.
All right.
That's a pretty good fine.
So you, 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 you have enough to take care of this then, right Jerry?
I do.
Okay, great.
When you get a call from the state, just tell, just forward it to me.
Will do. All right. So we're moving on to new business now. Um, I want to, uh, start with, uh, Danielle's been here patiently waiting. Uh, we're gonna take her out of order, uh, to H Employee Handbook. Oh.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry for the wait.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Um, so I presented a, a draft handbook, um, when I, when I, when I was asked to start the HR department uh, a few years ago, that was one of the items that was requested of me to, um, to look in doing a handbook. There were a couple of different versions that kind of floated around, uh, internally here, um, but I, I asked for the help of an HR consultant company, uh, GTM, uh, Pinnacle HR to help draft a handbook for us. Um, and it, it followed the guidelines of the state about the policies that we should have, which we do have, but the way our policies are, they're kind of loose. They're not in a formalized book. Um, I've made every effort to when a new person comes on board, they get a copy of all the policies. They're loose documents. They're not in a, a book per se. They're in a folder. Lou, Lou can attest to that.
I remember that, yes.
Yes. Um, but prior to me, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about how our long-term employees have those policies and what type of updates. So the, the handbook would put everything in one place. There'll be a quick reference so that, that if an employee does have a question, they would be able to refer to the table of contents to see if they can get the answers that they need. Um, nothing is really changing because we're following the things that are in this particular handbook, but it's just in a more formalized fashion. Um, and we're not changing the language. Um, the handbook, uh, there is some sign-offs and acknowledgements that keeps the employee, um, responsible for what they're being presented with. Um, I'm not sure what was done in the past and this will hold people more accountable. And it does not take away from our current, uh, collective bargaining agreement. This would just work in conjunction with that. So the handbook would just represent what everyone needs to follow, but there are references throughout the handbook saying if there's a particular item like a vacation time, uh, a person would need to refer to the, their perspective collective bargaining agreements. Uh, we have, we have two, uh, we have two unions, uh, that are in play right now, and we do have a number of non-union employees. Our non-union employees do follow the guidelines of one of the collective bargaining agreements, which is the CSCA. Um, so any non-represented person does get a copy of the CSCA agreement so that, that they can follow those guidelines. Um, this handbook has, has about 14 sections, uh, which also references general policies, which I distribute, a reference training that I've stay on top of, a reference employment, a policies, uh, which is also important so they understand the difference between the different classes of employees. So it's just a quick reference versus, um, coming to my office if they can get the answer a, a little more readily with that. Um, it also references compensation and how that's done and paid time off. Um, so this document is really meant to, to cover and protect the village, uh, saying that w- we are in compliance with what we're supposed to communicate to our employees. And in turn, the employee is signing off on that they did receive this document. Um, so my goal is to, um, to have this distributed to all of our employees, whether via a hard copy or an electronic copy. Our new employees would have it moving forward and it's a document that can be updated by GTM when there's a new policy update, uh, which does happen frequently. They'll let us know and then that can be, um, converted into this newer handbook, so that it's, it's distributed properly.
Who's GTM?
It's, uh, it's, it's a HR and payroll consultant company that we hired in December of last year. Um, and the purpose of that company is that when I started the HR department, um, I, everything was kind of in different locations and different departments. So I did my best to kind of streamline everything. And I'm on top of all of the compliance items that we're supposed to have, whether it's kosher or past or mandatory trainings or other like EEO, uh, requirements that I'm supposed to do. But I do feel that there are other things that I might not be looking at. You take for granted when you work in HR your whole career, you take for granted the items that every HR department has. When you have to start a new department from scratch, you're not quite sure what you might be missing. So GTM is helping me, uh, bridge that gap to make sure that I, I am compliant with everything that I'm doing, including putting in, uh, new processes and new policies, uh, to help kind of streamline things for the whole village, honestly.
Thank you.
What, uh, what do we need to do with this now?
Um, I mean, I did just, it was kind of posted. I just wanted everyone just to have an idea of, of what I wanted to do because it was something that was asked of me that they wanted a handbook. So I wanted everyone to see what this consultant company was able to come up with. It, it is a lot of information. Um, but I'd rather inundate people with information, so it's there, uh, and it's at their disposal. Um, and I guess I kind of turn it over to Dan or Jerry as to if this is something that the board has to approve or not.
Jerry, are you happy with this?
I am. It's a policy. That's why it's in front of the board.
We, I mean, we, because we have to adopt it as a policy.
If it's gonna be affected, we have to adopt it as a policy.
I, I mean, I think it's, you know, a no-brainer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, all in favor of adopting a, uh, employee handbook to be disseminated to all the employees? I move.
I second, as long as we don't, do we have to say specific draft or can we just say this handbook? Because it's gonna get revised.
Uh, what I think would be better if we can is that we, you know, the board adopts the policy that we have an employee handbook that is distributed to everybody, uh, all employees and that they acknowledge receipt.
All right, so I, I move that, uh, we adopt the policy of, of there being an employee handbook that is given to every new employee.
Are you, are you moving this to be adopted or to move to the regular meeting agenda?
Oh, you're right. Um.
Well, it's, it's, it's on for next week. I think what we did is that for a resolution as a policy, uh, as a broad policy as opposed to this specific handbook.
That way Danielle can amend it and doesn't have to come back to us.
All right. So we vote on it here? Now can we, can we do that?
No, we just referred to the, uh, to Bob, to draft or to Dan to draft a resolution to that effect.
Okay.
For the next, for the next meeting.
All right. I'm glad everybody's keeping an eye on me. I appreciate it.
Danielle, will you post this online or is it just internal?
Um, I would prefer it to be on in, internal because we don't have an intranet. Um, where it would just be to the employees. We only have the, the internet and, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, the other, um, item that would be taken out of order is replacement of the street sweeper. And we have James Barney standing by. Do we have Chief Barney?
Yeah, I am here.
There he is.
Oh.
Yeah, we can hear you.
There you go.
Now I can see you.
Sorry about that. Um, we're, uh, we're requesting that we can, um, add the street sweeper uh, to the, to the agenda. Um, we, we were supposed to replace it, I believe, uh, next, um, next capital budget item if it was to be approved.
Yep.
Um, the street sweeper, as you know, is a pretty sensitive, uh, tool in this village. It's also a pretty sensitive subject. Um, but the, the spare, what we consider the, the backup or spare street sweeper um, has, i- its parts are, are impossible to get. Um, it's, it's not as maneuverable as the, the newer machine. And while it is still of some value, we think it would be best to replace that sweeper. And the current frontline sweeper would still have some life left to be our backup sweeper. Um, right now where we're at, the, the frontline sweeper that we're using, um, is, is, was running non, non-stop during IDA. It was, it was taking a, a beating. Obviously, everybody saw that. It, it ran for the month of September. It, it was running 12-hour days for four weeks. Um, just that one machine and, and not a single breakdown. Um, and now we're seeing, now we're seeing the effects of that. It's, we've, the sweeper season's been open for two weeks. And that, that machine has actually been down and we've been using the backup sweeper. And now we're reliving all those problems with the backup sweeper that we were, you know, blessed to not have to deal with. So, um, and we think it would be very beneficial to, to get that machine replaced. And, um, you know, I, I have posted the, uh, posted the, the quote from Long Island Sanitation. It is, um, it is, uh, on the Sourcewell contract, so multiple bids are not needed. Um, it's also the exact, it would be the new version of the machine that we're currently using. Um, and the mechanics love working on it. It's a e- ease of ease of use while driving it, ease of use while repairing it. Um, we think that, we just, we, we think this is the right way to go. And we know it's a year earlier than it would have been planned, um, as far as the capital budget, but I don't think we can afford to wait.
But Chief, I, I need to, I need to interject here. When Tony and I worked on, uh, the capital budget, um, in its original version, we had it in the 21, 22, um, capital budget. So it's, it's for June. Um, it's the replacement of a 14-year-old, now it's a 16-year-old sweeper, I would assume.
That's correct.
Right, 16-year-old. Um, and the useful life is typically 12 years and four to five years in, in support capacity. So it's right there in that replacement. What was the lead time? Does I have here 10 to 12 months is what Tony anticipated?
Yeah, so there, he's telling me between, uh, eight, eight to 12.
Okay. So it's, it's really the same thing. You're only two months, two months, uh, ahead of schedule. That's really what you are.
We pay for it now or do we?
No, you pay for it when you get it delivered.
Right, so it's, it really doesn't make that much of a difference, right? Whether we.
Yeah, the, the resolution will be written that it's gonna be application of fund ballots or future, futurations of debt and Augie's gonna, if we go out to debt, Augie will put it all in, you know, a common issue.
Yep.
I, this is, I mean, I'm, I'm all for this, but I'm just asking Jerry a FEMA question. Um, so is the fact that our current streets, the, the new, how old, how old is the new one, James?
Uh, the new one is a third, no.
It, it was delivered in 2016, I think.
2016, yeah.
Our new one was damaged by IDA or by the use in IDA?
No, it's, 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 it's not that it was, it was damaged by it. It's just that it, the, the, the wear and tear, we, what we put it through, we, you, you probably took three years, four years off its lifespan.
So, I mean.
It's not, it's, it's still functional. I mean, I mean, it's, it's being repaired right now because common things that need to be replaced on it, um, but it's not, it's not broken per se.
No, I just meant, does Jerry get to factor that into his magic FEMA?
What they let me do, Nora, is they let me factor in the use, the four-week or five-week use of the street sweeper.
So that's, yeah.
And, and they get me and they, they give us a, a, an hourly rate for that. So that'll amount to a significant amount.
Right. Um, I mean, we need to do this. I'm just, I'm, I'm just sort of fascinated by how you guys have been, you know, managing these emergencies.
So, whi- which becomes the backup? That's what I'm confused on. What I'm hearing is we have two sweepers that.
Frontline one now, Dan.
Online now.
One, the one they're using as, as the main one now becomes the backup.
Yeah.
It's running the backup.
We're going to the support capacity.
Yeah, but, okay, but.
For auction.
Okay, but I'm, I'm sort of confused because I'm hearing that both have problems that the present backup has less hours, uh, and I gather or intimated maybe less problems than the current one that is the frontline one. Um, I, I just don't know which makes more sense to have as a backup or not, but.
So the, the current backup, the older of the two machines, um, from, just in the, in the 15 years that I've been here, it's got, it's always had constant issues. So that's, that's, that's the first thing. Um, it's, it's very difficult to work on. And now because of its age, it's very difficult to get parts for. Extremely difficult to get parts for.
Where I understand is that the, 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 uh, the, the parts are compatible with the two, the two units we have. You can get parts of both of them interchangeable?
Okay. Yep, absolutely.
So, so Nora, I just, I just looked up, um, the, um, the rate, um, uh, 240 hours is what we use the sweeper, uh, during the, during the cleanup period and, um, uh, we get $232 per hour, so it's $55,000 that we get from FEMA. For the, for our sweeper. So that covers, that covers a lot of sins right there.
And you, and with having, I'm having a slightly newer backup than you normally would have, and it's only slightly newer, it's a few months. You can, you, you know, you, you don't have to say, well, we're only using this truck. You can, it's up to, it's up to you guys to figure out how to balance the use of it.
Right.
And that, that's essentially what happened is we, we always, they actually used to alternate the machines, um, as, as they were using them regardless of the backup. But once, once we kept having constant issues with, with this older machine, it just didn't get used unless it was absolutely necessary because we knew that it was gonna, there was gonna be a breakdown.
Who wants to drive the clunker, right?
Right.
All right. So this is on for the regular meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Meeting?
Okay, what's next?
Okay. Health mitigation advisory committee? Is the chair? Is the chair here?
I think that got postponed, um, for two weeks.
Okay.
Alright.
I think there are a couple of other items which we would like to have on the twenty-fifth, which would be. Uh, funding request for Fenner Road Prospect Avenue intersection.
Um, this is something, uh, I think the, um. Uh, the engineer, our traffic engineer estimated it just around ninety thousand dollars for this to go out to bid, to bid. We decided to break it up. Um, we have, uh, public works doing the striping and the signage. We have parks doing the planting. And then we've been soliciting quotes for the construction, the actual, uh, concrete work. And, uh, uh, associated, uh, hardscape construction. So, um, we have a, a total request for funding. Which includes value engineering, which is a nice term for, our guys are gonna help do this.
Alright.
I have, there was, oh, isn't there like a ton, I, I, I'm trying to look at this. I looked at it the other day. There were a lot of plants. Was that the right number? It was like a huge.
No, there's, Nora, there's way too many plants. It's, it's, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They packed them in.
You could keep the Girl Scouts busy doing that.
They don't realize, they don't realize spacing in, in that small area, so.
Right.
We'll, we'll wipe that out. We'll, we'll, we'll redesign it. Plus, we're gonna use pollinator, um, um, plants. And, uh, and some other low maintenance stuff.
And it went out for bidding, right? It did go out for bidding.
For the, for the construction.
Solicited three quotes and the low quote is from Peter J. Landy Incorporated. Uh, they're the firm that's gonna be doing the work on Waverly Avenue and East Prospect Avenue. Uh, they're doing sidewalk work in the town of Amerenac. They've done work for us in the past. Uh, you know, they come, uh, uh, well recommended and, uh, I think they clearly understand the scope of the work.
Because we broke it up, because we broke it up, we're well below the threshold, so we didn't have to write bid specifications and put it out to bid.
Alright.
Okay, I mean, is that, that, it saves, I guess, does it save money to do it that way too?
Well, yeah, compared to the quotes that we got, it saves a lot of money. Plus, plus our, our, our employees are willing to.
To do.
To do.
Yeah, you're, the bidding.
We have the equipment, we have the knowledge, so.
Can we, Jerry, can you work up what the, what the relative costs are so we can demonstrate that for others?
Yeah, sure. You mean as far as what we're doing?
Yeah, uh, you know, what we're doing in-house.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and if we, you know, if we're doing it overtime, including the overtime, you know what the full cost would be. So, there is a comparison of both.
Okay, a comparison. So we didn't bid out the whole job, Dan.
But you have estimates from similar work that you.
I have estimates from the engineer, yes, that's correct. Yep, so we'll, we'll, we'll. We'll, um, show you our comparison compared to, um, what the engineer, you'll have that for the twenty-fifth.
Sixty-two thousand, the, probably the public works portion, the public works project, which are gonna work, Andy's doing. Is around twenty thousand and the other would account for, uh, the materials, the overtime for both, for. EPW parks and, uh, police if necessary.
I, I understand that, but if you, you add it all together and then, you know, you have, that you can compare. Uh, it gives a, it's not gonna, I'm not looking for a dollar-to-dollar comparison, but I'm looking for. You know, it's saving approximately X dollars versus Y dollars. That's our, you know, I think it's, you know, a good, a good way to manage it.
I agree.
Okay, so that's off for the twenty-fifth then. Um, next, uh. The, um, MAS PTA wants to serve alcohol at Parents Night Out on May twentieth.
They're renting the deck. They have approximately fifty people. Uh, it's a PTA, you know, no kids invited type of event. I guess it's mostly. Uh, billed as a fundraiser for the PTA, so they wanna have, um, they wanna have alcohol, uh, on that evening. Um, it's May twentieth, so it's off-season. Um, we all know that May is still, you know, guessing on what the weather is, but, uh. That's what they're asking the board and this is the process.
And the, they, they ran it by the Parks and Rec Commissioner, Reckon Parks and. Parks thought it was a good idea. That, I guess there have been other, um, fundraisers from both the school districts there. With great success. And good behavior.
Yep.
Any objections in? Alright, we'll put that, um. We don't, we did put that on for the regular meeting then, right?
For the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, we just wanna move it forward, yep.
Okay, alright. Uh, next, installation of glass, steel and glass bulletproof door at the, um. Rundown Police Department, we have, um, um. They wanna, uh. They want a bulletproof door.
Uh, the police department, I've received a grant to implement improved security improvements, which included the. Access control system and the, uh, a bulletproof, uh, door. Uh, and, uh, the board are previously authorized the purchase and installation of the access control system. There's about eighty-eight hundred, eighty-five hundred dollars left in that grant. Uh, the chief received quotes. Uh, I think the low quote was eighty-eight hundred dollars. So she's proposing to use the remainder of that, a couple hundred dollars from the contractual services line.
And, and this is compatible with the, with the work we're doing over there? Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, um, that's on for the twenty-fifth then. Any, any issues from anybody?
Yeah.
Maybe, so, so I apologize for coming in late. I was in the city, but what did we talk, did we talk about old business N as in Nancy?
No, no, we did not.
Was there a presentation for this evening?
No, they did, that was last week. It was two weeks ago. Well, no.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, I think we still, we're asked to coordinate that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't, uh, that's not.
We haven't had a discussion of that at the board, you know, with the.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's nobody waiting to talk to us.
No, right.
I mean, we talked a little bit about it two weeks ago with, um, some CFT members. And should the nicer presentation be at a regular board meeting or at a work session meeting?
Yeah, it should be at a regular board meeting. Hold on.
Yeah, regular board meeting.
Let me see here. Uh, Dan, are we, Dan, we're meeting with. Cat Carroll? Sometime next week?
Uh, to about the, uh, item two J.
No, I'm talking about item one N.
Oh yeah, that's, I think we're trying to set something up. I, I don't, I have. Let me see if I can find it in my, uh, calendar.
My recollection was that we asked, uh, staff to meet with them.
Yep, we set it up. Let me get the date. This Wednesday, ten o'clock or ten-thirty, ten-thirty, ten. Ten-thirty. And it is this Wednesday, we're meeting with the Clean Energy Communities Coordinator. Cat Carroll, K A T. Yeah. So we'll have more on that next, next time. I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
Alright.
We didn't skip, I didn't, I didn't miss something.
Go ahead, Dan.
I think we finished the, what had to be on for, you know, that to be moved through the twenty, so you need to go back, I think, to the regular, you know, to the agenda items.
Um, so the, oh yeah, here we go, the, um. Expanded Florence Street Stormwater Investigation and Study, uh, to be held, that's to be held, uh, April twenty, April twenty-fifth, never mind. I think we're caught up here.
No, we have to go back to, um, to one F. We have to go.
Right, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome, that's okay. But we're making progress.
One F transfer station roof project and solar panels at three-ten and three-thirteen Fayette Avenue.
So I just, I just received, um, late last week, uh, information, I think Friday actually. Um, from our, um, engineer and, uh, the, uh, firm that we were, um, working with on the transfer station. Um, they, uh, do not have a price increase to design. The transfer station roof with solar panels. So that'll be in the design. Um, they said that they would, um. They, they said that, um, so, so what I have to do for the board, um, when trustee Natchez asked is do a comparison of, uh. The first time, I believe, we received the quotes. Um, for the, uh, for the engineering and, and architectural work. And this, this, and what the difference was. So I'll do that for the next meeting. I'll make sure.
And the power we generate here would go where?
Um, right, what we, we would connect it to, we have to, we will either use it locally, right in our buildings or connect it to a grid.
I think that's great.
That's, that's great news. Alright. Are we caught up, Dan or Nora?
No.
So the next one is G.
Oh, social media policy, yes.
So, I, I put this on and it's been on for a while and, um. Uh, actually, the reason I put it on, it's sort of, I'm glad Danielle was here. Jerry and I. Early in the pandemic, decided that we should have a, um, a handbook for board and commission members. Which I've drafted a couple times and I've worked with Courtney on it. And what, and the last sticking point is the social media policy. Um, so we can explain to volunteer board and commission members how, you know, what the, what the social media policy is. And so basically. Our village policy is we push stuff out. We don't take comments so that we don't have to worry about them being, you know, like public records and stuff. Um, and.
Now, yep.
And I think that we have a policy that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, which I really think should be revised. And I think we should have like a subcommittee of people doing it. This doesn't have to be on the agenda. You know, every week, we just need to sort of get it done. I think. One of the things I'm concerned about in looking this up is that. Um, comments that we make on social media, if they relate to village business, could be construed to be, and this is a Bob question. Could be construed to be like a public comment or a public record. And how do we maintain those things? If we're talking about, and even if it's on our own social media accounts, if we're talking about village business, is that something that has to get captured? So I think we have a very good system for how the village pushes stuff out. But I think we have to figure out how to be mindful and give guidance to our volunteers. About what they can do. And so I included a couple of documents that I got. And the most useful one, I think, is, um. Well, it's page two hundred and, um. Nine or eight of, of my PDF, but it's the one from New York State Office of Technology Services. And, um, on page five of that. Um, it gives some guidance, um, about when you're speaking on behalf of. The state, which obviously we're not, we're not working on behalf of the state, but also about how state employees. Should be mindful about, um, what they're saying. And that's on page two of the next document. Could become public record. So I'm just putting that out there to think about. I don't have any answers. I, um, I'm gonna try to, I've tried to cobble something together. That I'll send to Bob, so we could just get the handbook out there. Even in the short term, because people have been asking questions. But, um, I think it's just something for us to think about and maybe we should have a, a couple of people who are thinking about it.
Now, is this, is this a social media policy you want to put in the handbook?
Uh, well, you know, yeah, I mean, I think, well, there, we have a social media policy. We can just append that to the handbook and it talks about pushing out. But, um. Like, there's a require, I mean, I think when, when the, you know, that when the village is. Posting, it's a village employee who's posting. They know what the rules are. I always just wanna make sure that all of the volunteers understand what. What construes a, a public record. So I, you know. I don't want to hamstring anybody, but I also don't want. Um, you know, we all know, we shouldn't be posting stuff that's confidential. We shouldn't be posting stuff that's, you know, subject of a lawsuit. Um, but, um, when we're posting stuff on our own personal social media, we have to be careful. Whether it's, you know, advertising, you know, an arts council, something and somebody complains about it, or whether it's, um. You know, talking about some other kind of village business. So I'm just putting it out there for, I think it's a conversation we have to have. And I think, uh, we should figure out who should be having that conversation to report back.
Okay, uh, let's, let's talk about it then. Alright, I mean, not now, but.
So it's, so it's, it's on the National Cities, uh, National League of Cities. It's bottom of page two. Top of page three. Uh, maybe all of page three. That's what you're talking about?
Yep.
That kinda stuff, okay.
So, and I just, you know, I think it's something we need to, you know, it's. Social media is something that everybody uses to some extent or another, and I just, I feel it's something that we need to be. On top of.
But you're okay, you're okay with, with what our P I, uh, Robert and I do because.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think.
We clear and debate, we, we debate and then clear everything that goes on and we're like a one-way communication machine.
Right, and I, and I think that's really the smart way of doing it. I mean, that's the safest way of doing it, but, um, but. That doesn't include individuals. And I think we should probably update our two thousand and fifteen social media policy. At a minimum and put that in this little, this little book for volunteers, booklet.
Are those the only two resources? It was, um. New York State Info, uh, New York State, um. I T and, uh, cities, did, does, um. Albany have, does the, uh, uh, Nikon have something?
I got, I think I got these. This has been so, so long in the making. I think I got these from Nikon.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I got these from Nikon.
Okay.
Alright, um.
Tree law?
Discounts for outdoor dining permits.
Are we, do you wanna go in or, oh, do you wanna go in order or?
Where, where were we? We were, uh, social media project, uh, all the tree law.
Yeah.
Alright, planning board comments on tree law.
This should be really quick. And, um, the planning board worked, uh, the planning board had some comments about harmonizing the tree law with. Some planning board issues and I think Beverly did Bob, I mean, Bob, did Beverly go over this with you?
No, she has not.
Okay, so, so it's, I guess it's for, for then, oh, I'm sorry, I thought she did. So there's just, there were a couple of technical things that they came up with. And gave to the tree committee. And then there was, um, and they, they seemed to be like definitions and just. Comparison. So maybe Bob needs to look at this for next week. And then there was one other issue, um, that I think Jerry knew, Jerry and Dan knew about last week. Or a few weeks ago, if a tree falls. That we didn't cover that. Like, obviously, it's not, you know, if a tree, if a tree falls down in a storm, it's not likely to be replanted, right, Jerry?
Correct.
I mean, we can't. So, how, so how do we, we remove it or some, we, I mean, one removes their tree. Do they have to get a permit to remove it if it's fallen? Like, what's that process? And so we just need to stick that in there.
Yeah. So, so it's a, it's a tree removal permit to remove the tree, but there wouldn't be a replacement requirement. Does a replacement required for any tree that's removed?
Right.
Um, that's standing, of course, that's, you know, dead or dying or diseased or hit by lightning. But I don't think we would make that a requirement. I hope it's not that way. And if not, we can clear that up. I hope we don't make it a requirement.
I think it just wasn't clear. I think it just wasn't clear.
Yep.
So I think, and so Beverly, the tree committee's meeting in two weeks and they were gonna, they were gonna talk about it. They thought it wasn't clear. So I guess the question is, Bob, if you take a look at this and see if you agree. This'll be version twenty, this'll be version twenty-one. Twenty-two of the.
This will start again, Nora. This will get a new letter.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, well, we'll start, you have to start again, I guess.
It would be an amendment.
The, the one thing.
It's gonna be one version and one version of.
The, the one thing that I think would, would require some debate is the tree fund or bank. Treebank is different than a tree fund. The tree fund is a developer putting money, uh, because they can't plant a tree on their property. And, uh, providing us money. Um, to plant the tree some. And, uh, providing us money, um, to plant the tree someplace else. I don't have a problem with that, but that has to be, that has to be the boards. The board has to be good with that.
And I think the planning board recommended it, be, be, it's not, that it's not up to, it isn't up to anybody but the planning board, because um, I think they're in some situations where there have been a lot of trees removed, and simply you couldn't plant the number that needed to be replanted.
Yeah.
So I think they're, cause they're, they wanted to be able to, you know, sort of leverage it into trees in, in other places. It, because, and if you can't accommodate, I don't know, replacement of eighty trees or whatever it is, you wanna maybe make sure the village has those eighty trees to plant someplace else.
Yeah, so Scarsdale did that according to what, to what's here, but the, uh, the price for the tree is, is too low. We're, we're paying, you know, much higher than that on the next tree planting. Uh, in fact, the best prices we've ever gotten were, were higher than, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And maybe it doesn't have to be an amount per tree. Maybe it's market rate.
Yeah, we can always give a market rate, because we bid out trees every year.
Yeah, so it could be.
We can always tell them what it costs.
Well, if you spell the market rates, it should be the market rates to, that, for the village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What we pay, right?
Well, it's what we pay and what, what the type of tree is that is desired. As opposed to what a developer may wish.
Well, and I think the way this would be structured is, it would be part of their, um, a condition of their getting their permit, right? Getting their site plan approval, so. So.
Yeah, we're paying trees on public property. You know, that's not just the tree, it's the water, the gator bag, the time we spend to load the gator bag every week.
Yeah.
Two bucks. It adds up.
Okay, so, those are the, so I guess, I guess we should wait for another couple weeks to see what Bob thinks, if we're ready for something to then try and get hearing. In the, in the attempt that we have version one, and only version one.
Recom discussed it already?
The tree committee discussed these changes.
Oh.
But they didn't discuss the idea of, um, of specifically saying what happens if a tree falls.
Okay.
I, I created some language and then sent to the tree committee. I'll send it to Bob as well.
Yeah, that's an easy one.
And then, of course, they're eager to hear what we hear back from the Attorney General. But we haven't, you know, we don't know when we'll hear back, right?
No.
No.
All right, so that's, uh.
Is that the one we heard? To the, uh, to the controller's office?
Yes, that's right. I, I believe it was at the beginning of this year or end of last year. They said they forward to the controller's office.
Didn't, yeah. And didn't we include that in the agenda? Why, was this something by mistake? Or was it something else that we just got?
The, the mo, the most reason we, we, one received was regarding the referenda.
Oh, yeah.
Forwarded to the B O E, yeah.
B O E, right. But so we're still waiting for the controller to get back to us, right?
Yeah, we're still waiting.
That's on hold. Now, discounts for outdoor dining permits using public parking. Um, what do we think about that?
So I can tell you what we've done.
Just, where, where are, just, where are we?
We have to go to I.
I think, I think we have to go to I. Lou, Lou really wants to go to M, but I think we have to go to I. We gotta go to I. I can introduce I when you're ready.
Okay, I, I got, okay, yeah, okay. So let's, uh, general municipal law, civil service law, okay, this is the, this is what Shelley Mayer was talking about. The, um, adjustment to the, um, uh, to the, uh, civil service law that would allow, um, uh, our emergency medical volunteers to, uh, to get health insurance. Am I correct on that?
I think it's employees. I don't know if it's volunteers. So, so I, I believe it's employees, because volunteers doesn't go through the civil service process. Employees go through the civil service process.
All right.
And I think right now, so, so, um, um, several months ago, I went to a Municipal Administrators Association meeting. And, uh, we discussed this, um, Chris Bradbury from Ry Brook. Was a long time, uh, um, manager there. He brought this up. And so it looks like it's got some traction. Now, I'll just read the middle paragraph. Um, from, uh, from our association, our Managers Association, Dan and I belong to. Most recently, state legislation, uh, Senate eighty-four thirty-two was introduced to the Senate, which, among other things, would designate EMS as an essential service to be provided in some form as determined by municipalities. Currently not a requirement. Uh, it also creates a path to obtain, um, access to group, group health insurance, which is the N I ship, which is our, our health insurance retirement system training, and developing regional and state guidelines and standards to provide EMS services. I think that's what the bill is introducing. There's a letter in the packet, or a pretty long letter from Chris Bradbury, who's kind of spearheading this. Um, and it says here, uh, let me see. Actually, it's a different bill number. But it says here, um, what was introduced, or what is being considered, uh, and referred to the Committee on Local Governments is an act to amend general municipal law uh, in relation to classifying emergency medical service provided by municipalities, essential service to provide and apply for and receive state aid. That's a different aspect altogether. So basically, I think that's what they're looking for. They're looking for, and Mr. Sarnoff, you gotta jump in if I'm a little off base, but I think they're looking for EMS, um, to be employees like, um, to have access to certain benefits, just like the employees of a municipality, uh, police, if they have a paid fire, you know, uh, emergency, emergency response, uh, emergency, you know, um, disaster personnel, those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's basically, uh, basically deeming EMS as an emergency service.
Well, a, and not as a volunteer service. I think that's the, the key.
Well, so, some, in some communities of volunteer, and some of them that they're employees.
Right, but, but what I think, I think, I, you know, I have a cousin who's been an E M T for forty years, and, um, the, it's just, and they're in Massachusetts, and there's just a real switch, because they can't afford for people to do it on a volunteer basis anymore. It's, it needs to be, uh, it needs to be professionalized. I mean, it is professionalized. It, it doesn't matter. It's like our fire department, it doesn't matter whether you're a volunteer or that you're paid, you're still highly trained. And, um, that everything is moving towards a paid system, and what's happening is, there aren't enough E M Ts, because people don't get the kinds of benefits they need to do this.
And we have a hybrid here, where we have some volunteers, and then we have paid.
Yeah.
We also have, uh, um, a relationship, you know, operational relationship with the town, uh, and Larchmont's, uh, volunteer ambulance, I'm sorry, ambulance squad.
So basically, we're, uh, being asked to express our support for the state legislation.
That's what the ask is.
Legislation would allow members of volunteer fire and ambulance companies to be eligible for health benefits.
So it does include volunteers?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I.
I didn't think of that.
Amendment. And that's similar to, uh, the fire park, because volunteer firefighters are eligible for our health insurance. They have to pay the full cost, but they are eligible to participate.
Well, I, I, I think this is something we, we would support, so let's just, uh, put it on the, uh, agenda in two weeks. Talk about it. Great.
Yeah.
That's fine.
All righty then.
M.
Now we get to M. Discounts, discounts for outdoor, uh, parking permits, uh, for the, uh, yeah.
During the first year of the pandemic, uh, twenty twenty, we did not charge for outdoor, um, uh, I call, I call them parking spot cafes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the second year, we charged seventy-two dollars per spot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, per week. Uh, this year, we're at full rate at a hundred and twenty dollars per spot per week. A week is seven days, but we're only charging for six days, because we don't charge parking on Sundays. So we went from zero to seventy-two to one-twenty. It's pretty clear to me that the restaurants that, um, take us up on this benefit, um, in essence, double, maybe even more, their space for serving, um, uh, patrons. Uh, the first year, it became kind of like a shanty town with a lot of, uh, makeshift sheds and covers and tarps and all of that stuff, and I didn't really like the look of that. So the second year, I didn't allow that. Um, we put up the blocks, and, um, we take away the blocks uh, right around, uh, you know, Thanksgiving time, I guess, whenever we do it. But, um, we're not that far off from, you know, it's forty-eight dollars, whatever it is. We're not that far off from, uh, from last year, uh, per week. I understand that, uh, you know, some of these businesses want, uh, a discount when they can get it, and, you know, while it's rolling. But the truth is, it continues to, um, push Maranek shoppers, Maranek Avenue shoppers to the back lots, because, um, we already have, uh, issues with parking on the main strip, which, you know, is the.
Parking is tight, parking is tight, so it's, it's not a small consideration for us. I guess the, the question is, um, did we wanna offer any, uh, minimal discount, let's say, to a Chamber of Commerce members, or something along those lines?
That's it. I'm willing to hear what the board suggests. At the end of the day, I make the decision, but, you know, whatever the board wants me to do, I'm good with. I wanna make, uh, I wanna make the businesses as happy if possible, and, and of course, I definitely wanna make the board happy.
I, uh, offer, we can't offer a benefit to a chamber member that another, that another, we, that another merchant in the community doesn't have. I mean, I don't, we have that, because we have that conversation two years ago, when they, you know, when they wanted to, to limit the, this to just chamber members, and we couldn't do that. We limited it initially to people who had already filed for a sidewalk cafe permit.
All right, I, I just wanted to raise the issue. It was raised with me. I said I'd put it on, and we would talk about it. So I just wanted to see what, uh, what you thought about it. That's basically it, um.
You know, Ry did this extensively two years ago. I mean, we all, a lot of communities did it two years ago and didn't charge for parking, in part because we weren't charging for parking anyway. We were, you know, we're collecting, and we were just trying to sort of feel our way through the pandemic. Ry did not close Pritchett Street last year for this. And they're not doing it this year. Larchmont has left a lot open. I'm curious as to what they're doing for parking, because they didn't charge for parking until about a year ago.
Oh, they are, right.
They're, they're barely enforcing the, the parking. They aren't extensively charging for, so, uh, they have their own issues.
But I would wanna stay away, I would wanna stay away from the Larchmont model of constructing,
Hmm.
Um, you know, sheds.
It's not a good look.
Term in the street. It's like the city model. But, um, you know, if the, if the board wants to, um, wants to give a, a, a ten, fifteen percent discount on the, on the full rate, um, and give the business owners who have, uh, street dining, you know, intentions of, of getting street dining, uh, that would be, that would be something. It's really up to you. It's really up to you.
And I think the, you know, we have an issue for a lot of other businesses that are also members of the chamber. Who, where they, you know, are having problems, you know, because people can't, don't wanna park in the back, and, you know, uh, and we're taking away parking, you know, to allow them, you know, it would, I think it's a, a, a much different concept when you can only do it outdoors. But I think Jerry has pointed out that, um, you know, in most cases, it's been doubled or increased, double. You know, the, uh, space, um, and I, uh, we, you know, if they wanna take advantage of it, that's fine, and if they don't, that's fine. Um, uh, I, I know a lot of people think it is a, uh, you know, money, but in relation to what you can, you can, you know, work out in the numbers, unreasonable approach. And I, I gathered, Jerry, that, you know, that's, that's your recommendation to, because you've already said it.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to be a little flexible.
I think, I think we should, you know, go along with it.
All right, I think, uh, we're probably all agreed on that. I wanted, I, I, I said I would bring it up, and, uh, there it is, and we've, we've.
What do you wanna say?
Sally has her hand up. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just saw Sally's.
I'm sorry, who has their hand up?
Sally.
Oh.
Sally.
Sally.
I have my hand up, Nora?
Yeah.
Oh, not on purpose.
I'm a panelist. I don't need to raise my hand.
I know, you can just talk if you want to.
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. All right, that's it then.
Okay, you get a prize. We ended at seven twenty-five. You get a prize.
That's it, yeah. The other things I think we can wait on, um, let's, uh, let's take a break, uh, and, uh, come back at eight o'clock. Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See a little while.
Unanimous. There you go. We'll see you at eight o'clock.
Well, it's, it's. Okay.
What was he saying?
Are we for the recording?
Dan's here, okay, here we go. Ready to go? Good evening, everyone, this is the regular meeting of the Village of Amerenic Board of Trustees. Mayor Murphy and trustee, the four absent. Begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh wait, we have to open the meeting first, right? Sorry, a motion to open the meeting, please.
No move.
Okay, second unanimous, since the meeting is open, staff the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Need a motion, please?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, alright. Okay, communication, presentations from the board, Sustainable Westchester, you here?
Yes, hello.
Hi, hi, okay.
Alright.
Mr. Nick Tedrow. We're all yours.
Awesome, thanks. Show my screen here. We're running, okay, well, thank you, board, for having me, hello to everyone out there. My name is Nick Tedrow. Hi, I'm the program manager for Westchester Power Program here at Sustainable Westchester. And talk you through sort of where we're at with the program and this contract that we're in, that's apparently winding down. And discuss the steps forward, what we have planned, so. Just a brief level, if anyone out there is not familiar, Sustainable Westchester is a nonprofit consortium in Westchester County. Our members are forty-four to forty-five municipalities in the county. And a subset of those, twenty-nine that you can see here, participate in Westchester Power. With Yonkers joining this last month as the twenty-ninth municipality. Our rough customer account total is up to roughly one hundred and forty-seven thousand residential and small businesses. So, in terms of what the program's done. We've had quite an impact in promoting renewable energy and really accelerating the adoption of clean energy in the state. You could see, impact wise, countywide, throughout all municipalities. We've mitigated roughly one point one million metric tons of CO2 from the atmosphere. And Amerenic's contribution to that is fifty-nine thousand roughly, so. In more tangible terms, than metric tons of CO2, you can see what that's meant in terms of cars taken off the road every year. And trees easily grown and planted and grown for ten. So, definitely have had a huge impact, reducing emissions and having a benefit to our communities here in the county. And we're hoping to continue that and grow. So, today, in terms of how the contracts have performed rate, rate wise. You can see this graph here is just the visual of since our inception, which Amerenic Village has been with the program since the beginning, so. You know, valleys and mountains there, but consistently across, you can see our fixed rates have remained. And certainly in these last, January, you can see there towards the end, that big blue Con Edison bar spiking up in the middle. That was a good time to have Westchester Power in terms of a little cost cap and assurance on what we were going to pay that month. And a month that was really tough for a lot of people, all of us really with with the spike across the board in Con Edison building, so. Our current rates are here at the top, one hundred percent renewable energy supply, seven point four one cents per kilowatt hour. And our standard supply, six point seven five cent kilowatt hour, and these are fixed through the end of June. This contract and these rates launched January first, twenty twenty-one, so we're at the end of that eighteen month term here now, in a couple months. A different way of looking here, just at the sort of monthly average in terms of cents per kilowatt hour through through May or through the beginning of May. You know, since the launch, on the right side there, you can see we trailed a little bit. On the average, to the Con Edison rates, except for in the residential standard supply column. But this current contract, again, has has performed really well on an average cost cents per kilowatt hour against Con Edison. Across all categories, even the renewable, being financially competitive and better than Con Edison, so. Really, just emphasizing again, the the great way we've been able to collectively hear through your participation and participation. Whether municipalities bring cost-effective renewable energy at community scale, so. So now, moving on to, you know, what's going to happen here with the end of this contract. We're trying to move into sort of a Westchester Power two point O phase, where we're able to expand our capacity for economic and environmental impact. So that'll be centered a lot around increasing our supplier pool, so that we have more competition. And therefore are getting better pricing and more competitive pricing to go out to our customer, resident customers with. You know, and this will also entail us building more tools in our toolbox and capacity to do different things. Support longer term contracts and more flexible supply formats, going to the market more with more agility. When it's good times perhaps, and blending better pricing in, offering different kind of rates, things like that. And then, in the long run, you know, we're hope this will all bring even more price stability. And hopefully also, we're we're getting to a point where we're able to build renewable construction and support those projects being developed here in our communities. And directly having green energy generation at the local level. So aspirations for what we're trying to do here with these two point O imperatives. So currently, you can see our model here in this box on the right is the, you know, way we currently do our supply contracts work. We we go out and we run an auction with a bunch of retail ESCOs. So ESCOs are the only entities in besides utilities that have the authority in the state of New York to serve retail customers. So we have to run an auction where we invite different ESCO companies to come, bid on our aggregate supply or capacity. And and then award a contract based on the results of that auction, which is limiting in a few ways. It's, you know, we have to only, we can only invite ESCOs, so that doesn't necessarily include everyone who generates energy in the state. It's a subset of those people, so. And furthermore, we need to have an ESCO who's a, you know, pretty decent size and reputability. So we can make sure we have a reliable, obviously supplier for our fairly large aggregation. So trying to step out of that that box and build more supply competition. We're looking to move into a two point O phase where we have a firm contracted that we, who can serve as an ESCO and provide those services. Those auxiliary pieces that make up a full retail offering. And then we can just expand our supply options by going out to the wholesale market and running auctions for just the energy portion of this whole retail supply package. So those those entities out there who do generate electricity but don't operate as an ESCO retail supplier. For whatever reason, that doesn't fit their business interests, we can actually go to them now in this new proposed model and run an auction for that energy piece. And then sleeve it with our ESCO partner who can provide those services to make it a full retail offering. So that wholesale portion is about fifty percent of the cost, or the generation, the energy. Who can provide those services to make it a full retail offering, so that wholesale portion is about fifty percent of the cost, the or the generation, the energy part or more, so obviously insignificant. So by breaking those pieces up a little bit, we can, if nothing else, get a look under the hood, understand the wholesale market better and continue to grow our capacities along the way. But we think this provides an opportunity to really increase our pricing competitiveness by by expanding the wholesale market. So, that's what we're looking to do in the, with our next long-term contract is is run this. Excuse me, run this new operation, so on that, how that'll look, on the same day when we go out to do the traditional auction with the ESCOs, we'll we'll do that the same as we always have. Invite the ESCOs to come out, bid for that whole retail supply offering, and then on the same day, run a wholesale energy block auction. And then, you know, at the end of all that, we can look and see what our best ESCO offerings were, and then we'll have our best wholesale prices as well with our known leaving cost associated or added into that and and compare, so. Like I said, we think that that has the potential to give us really competitive pricing, you know, even beyond what we've been able to do so far. And again, nothing else, we're we're growing our capacity, learning more about the market and diverse way we do our work. So with that, right now, when we're coming to you towards the end of this contract, June thirtieth, what we're recommending is a contract extension. One reason for that is to have additional time to organize for this different enhanced auction process, which, you know, has a few different pieces to it, modifying the RFP. Making sure we're we're fully set up with this leaving arrangement with our partners to make that a reality. And also get new retail bidders to come and and prepare who are interested in bidding on our contracts so that they're ready for the next auction. And as well as lining up the wholesale energy supplier as well. Then we also have this other big consideration that we'll talk a little bit about here as well, which is this period of high risk, high uncertainty in the market. It's no secret to anybody with many things in the world right now, costs are going through the roof. And there's a lot of uncertainty out there and and gas and energy at large is is certainly front and center with that. So, right now, as we're, you know, looking at what the pricing and the futures market holds, it's, it looks pretty substantially high. And a lot of that, we've been advised and believe is due to what they're calling, you know, uncertainty in the market, since we don't know what's going to happen geopolitically in in Russia and Ukraine and some of these other factors. All of that uncertainty and risk is baked into the pricing right now, so we're hoping to move beyond that with a contract extension and look, you know, towards the future a little bit. Or locking into a long-term contract, so we've got an approval from DPS up to six months for a contract extension. What we've been seeing right now is that five months looks like it's sort of the sweet spot so far in the indicatives we've received, which we'll look at here for an extension target. So, and then just noting, obviously, we touched on what our rates are a little bit before, those are far below what the market rates are now, so we'll be contracting for an extension at a significantly higher rate than what we're currently at for this, June thirtieth. So, the timeline of the new steps. We're confirming, we're sort of moved through this, but we sort of settled with chief electeds and admins a couple weeks ago on what we thought our price not to exceed should be for a new new MOU extension. And right now, we're, you know, going through the process of getting everybody on board, which is why I'm here with you today. To to get Mamaronek Village on board with the new price not to exceed and this MOU participation. And then we're moving right along to executing contracts mid this mid-month, this month, to go ahead and act on a price once we, once we can do that with everybody in board onboard. And then it looks just like a contract renewal, we have to do a mailing to all the current participants, letting them know about the new pricing, giving them the opt-out period. That ends at the end, mid-June, and then we'll roll July one with the new extension date and and extension prices in that period. And then when we get to the end of that and we're preparing for the new enhanced auction version, we'll be, you know, doing that mid-August and looking to lock into a longer-term contract at that point. So. My slideshow appears to be stuck, sorry, I can't. One second. Alright, so just to give, you know, a little setup here before I deliver what the new proposal we have for price not to exceed is. Just touching on where the markets at a little bit more, natural gas prices, as I said, are on the rise. The futures have doubled since the time we last contracted for this aggregation back in the end of twenty-twenty-ish. And so, as I, and as I also said before, energy constitutes about half of that full electricity retail price that we see when we get the final rate dollar cents per kilowatt hour. So, you know, looking at that alone, our current standard price of six point seven cents from twenty-twenty, if we say a fifty percent increase to the to the gas price there, that brings up to roughly ten point oh five just alone on that. And then we have recs and whatnot to consider for the renewable option, so. All signs currently point to these things continuing, you know, we're going to be continuing to see increased reliance on other market sources from Europe, who has a huge demand from gas and has gotten, gets a lot of their gas from Russia. And a lot of plans from the United States to increase its liquid natural gas exports to fulfill that, where they're willing to pay exorbitant prices compared to what US consumers pay. So, a lot of, a lot of pressures that don't seem to immediately be on the horizon of changing are going to keep, continue to push these prices up. So, similar with the rec and the renewable energy credit, current contract we're on right now, we we settled at point six for that rec price. The recent contracts are that were executed for NiSEG territory and the Yonkers contract was up to one point five cents roughly, and now with current indicatives, we're seeing, you know, one point seven, one point eight-two with the losses factor that they have to generate for overpurchasing. So, it's it's all going up, it's all painting picture, things are going up, and a lot of the the rec pressure has been for a variety of reasons, so, you know, out-of-state purchasers swooping up recs and then selling them for a markup markup in other states. And so there's been some artificial manipulation there going on at the state. Price targets, again, this is just snapshot of what we were current, what we were seeing very recently, when we go to the New York State resource for purchasing or shopping for ESCO contracts. Similar renewable fixed-rate contracts, you can see it's in the thirteen cents range there. And this is, you know, traditionally what's been the most competitive renewable energy supplier recently, and we went into their actual website and started looking up an account or a contracts to try and get that really specific quote, again, thirteen something. So, that's where the renewable energy prices are right now, if you were to go out and try and find a contract with a private company. So, I'm almost done, I promise. These are the way that our indicatives have been tracking since here, so these these indicatives wanted to represent a couple of suppliers. And the pricing date, when we get these quotes of what they're pricing the energy at over time, so. As we've gone on, it's slowly crept up, and again, five months is really where we've been focused now as the best price point. And when we've sort of resolved on a price not to exceed, we were looking at this three twenty-three price of nine nine four for a, for the energy, and then looking at that one eight-two for the rec adder. Which rolled up to roughly eleven seven six here down the bottom. So, even since then, we've had an indicative of March thirtieth, and that price has ticked up again since then, so. It it's been, you know, steadily creeping for some time now, it's not jumping. So what we're proposing is a price not to exceed of twelve and a half cents. It it tracks with what we've been seeing and as the margin of movement over the weeks, as we've tracked the indicatives from our suppliers, from potential suppliers. In this case, we're we're looking to extend directly with Constellation, the current supplier, and what they've been giving us. So, planning with that in mind of planning for some growth, we're trying to set a ceiling that we think should be attainable for twelve and a half cents. We've had some recent experience with these rapidly upward pricing movements in the fall or in the summer, there was a huge spike due to IDA and some other things going on that caused energy prices to go, you know, start really going up then. Which got us, caught us a little bit where we had MOUs executed with a price not to exceed with those NiSEG communities that ended up not being executable with the rapid rise in pricing that sort of outpaced our ability to sign a contract, so. Obviously, that was, ended up being fairly disastrous and that's, you know, we didn't have enough buffer and we were stuck where we didn't have enough timeline to reset targets and stay on the schedule with that contract renewal. And then we we had a lot of challenges where we basically had to pause the program and send out letters to residents that their program was pausing, and they were also getting utility switch letters saying, hey, you're going back into NiSEG. And and got that up, you know, and then they had to get an opt-out notice later on, so it was really just kind of a mess. And obviously, folks weren't unhappy about it and with the timing of when it happened with all of this spiking in January with the utilities, NiSEG was the same way. People, you know, obviously felt particularly abandoned with rates, you know, getting dropped from the program and then having all these rates hit them really high and hard in that period, so it was really bad on many levels. So, you know, when we talk about what's at stake here of of having to pause the program, you know, all the value features we talked about, having that rate cap, that insurance against those spikes, even, you know, for that one piece of the bill is really critical and important for a lot of folks. And, you know, having the ability for folks to change supply, that's a great thing as well, and and just the stability really overall and the the availability of this, you know, cost-competitive renewable energy option that we offer to to residents. So, with that, that's the the story of why we're here, to talk about an extension and hope that you'll support moving forward of, you know, with a resolution or whatever for a price not to exceed, MOU of twelve point five cents per kilowatt hour. So that we can sort of pipe through these these months and get to a point where we can move forward with the new enhanced auction process that'll hopefully, and we feel, will provide a lot of great competition and and ultimately a great price for a long-term contract at that point.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of what you you folks do, and I believe it's probably one of many things that we need to do in tandem to break our fossil fuel habit. And and make our communities more resilient, so I am. I'm appreciative of the of the presentation and and thank you very much for coming in, appreciate it.
Okay, great, yeah, if anyone has any questions about any of this, feel free to reach back out to us, otherwise, yeah.
So I have a question. So, Nick, so what's our renewable price right now?
Our renewable price, yeah, it's seven point four one cents per kilowatt hour.
Right, and we're anticipating going up to twelve and a half or just under twelve and a half?
That is what we're, yeah, proposing to be the ceiling for this MOU, so we're targeting a a price somewhere at or below twelve point five. With the, with some risk that, you know, it doesn't end up happening and we get stuck again, and we have to hope the market kind of hides our way.
So, am I out of line, am I out of line by saying that it seems like our renewables just follow the trend of the market rate? And not necessarily benefit us because we obviously know that renewables. Tell tell everyone where we're getting renewables from.
Yeah, so renewables in the New York, in New York State, renewables are represented, you know, in in through our program, through renewable energy credits, so. We're, without getting too much into the explaining what the rec market is, basically, we're buying up. Or our supplier on behalf of us is, in order to represent this energy, is buying up these credits on a, on the market through NiSEGA, through their tracking program. So, these different generators of renewable energy generate this energy and it all has, goes into a repository where it has, you know, a tag to it. And each credit is represented as one megawatt hour of renewable energy generation. So, when the supplier is getting us, you know, our renewable energy supply, they're buying up these credits in the amount requisite to represent the renewable energy that we're supplying for our program. So, with us, it's New York State Hydro Power Rex, so when we lock in our contract, they go into the market and they are into into the market and they buy up enough recs for the energy, the representative energy for our, our participants who are going to be on the renewable supply.
Renewable energy is cheaper, it's just that we get the credits, that's why the credits are are brokered or bought and sold, and that's why we're getting the the cheaper rate.
Yeah, the, well, so anyone who's, you know, most people who are, a lot of, a lot of folks are on there buying these credits, so businesses do it for their environmental compliance reasons, and a lot of folks buy these credits, so. Yeah, the the renewable energy, you can think of it as sort of a premium that we broker for on the market, but the price for that is set, you know, by the state for those credits.
So, and the five-month extension with Constellation is because we think the market, or you think the market's going to potentially get better or not necessarily, because the long-term numbers were even higher. But at least there's stability in the long-term numbers.
Yeah, so, you know, the thinking is that, one, we do want to, like I said, prepare for this new auction format, but two, we do think, you know, right now, there is the possibility for, you know, things to change in the world and more stability to come into play with, you know, whatever happens geopolitically, but, you know, we're not hurt by, you know, at this point, trying to ride through the current market and anticipate or hope at least, maybe hope's the right word, that things do relax and ease in the market a bit in five months plus. So that we can be positioned and to to take advantage of lower rates and lower future market prices than what's currently out there right now. Because there is a huge, just a huge uncertainty out there, you know, no market expert can tell you what's going to happen in the world or what's going to happen with futures right now, so it's a, you know, a pretty high-risk move to lock into prices that are, you know, particularly exorbitant in current.
So, so in five months, in five months, you'll be back to us asking us to, or you'll give us projections regarding the next auction platform that you guys plan to participate in.
Yeah, we'll have, you know, some market analysis, I'm sure, but, you know, we'll also be not talking in the strict terms of a contract extension where, you know, we'll be bringing again, we'll be opening it up to a full auction again and having multiple suppliers come, you know, competing against each other. Through a competitive bid process, which will, you know, bring more, you know, price competition to to the table and won't be as constricted as working through one particular supplier and negotiating that way.
And you guys are not comfortable doing that now, you just want the extension to give yourself that hundred-and-fifty-day buffer.
Yeah, there's, that was a, you know, part of, a big part of it, and the the market effects of what's going on right now is, there's a lot of suppliers who aren't comfortable, you know, really pricing out stuff right now. Because they don't know what's going to happen, so it's actually kind of put a chilling effect on out there for a lot of suppliers who are very wary of entering into long-term agreements.
So it's mostly them and not us necessarily?
Yeah, not necessarily, well, we hope to be more agile going forward in the future, so we're going to do things that'll make it, where we don't have to, you know, hopefully, do these mechanical month-long processes and we can find ways to abbreviate our compliance steps with the, you know, through DPS where we can strike when the, when the market's hot and things like that, but that's not really the the main issue here, it's just a matter of the market being completely, you know, in uncharted territory. Okay, thanks, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Just one question, what do you need from us at this point?
Yeah, so, we've sent out the the final draft of the MOU, that's in the hands of, I think, the, excuse me, mayor administrators over there with you all. So, we are looking to, I think I pointed out our timeline before, we're hoping to execute our Energy Service Agreement extension with the supplier mid-month. So the soonest we could get the approval and signature on the MOU would enable us, you know, and we're getting that from all twenty-four of the municipalities right now to go out and you know, give us the freedom to execute that ESA if we were to get that price point we're looking for, so as soon as you all are able, if there's a resolution that needs to pass to authorize that, that would be what we need is that memorandum.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
See you, Nick, thanks, man.
Appreciate it.
Yep, bye-bye.
Alright, next, the communications to the board.
Can we, Luke, just for a minute, Jerry, are are you asking for a resolution from the board or is this something that you can execute?
No, I can't, we can do this next meeting on the twenty-fifth, we don't have to do it now.
Yeah.
We can do it on twenty-fifth, it's close enough, they're going to proceed to how they're going to need, they're going to proceed as long as everyone on this Zoom is comfortable with what Nick has just explained to us, which which I am, I understand it. Then we can do it on the twenty-fifth, Nick, we're, our next meeting is April twenty-fifth, and so, yeah, so I can give you, I can give you a an email, you know, that we discussed and we moving forward, but but, you know, we don't necessarily have on the agenda, nor did we provide, and did we prepare for a resolution, I don't think so tonight, I mean, it may pull my, no, we don't have that.
Okay, yeah.
Twenty-fifth is our next meeting.
Okay, yeah, let, let's definitely talk then offline. And obviously, that's, we're, our target here is to hopefully get every, obviously ASAP. We were aiming for this week because then we, you know, have a tight turnaround to try and execute this ESA and to get all the munis to sign it, you know, before markets move. So whatever you can do, we'll work around whatever you got, but, uh, yeah.
It's really an extension onto our current agreement, not necessarily a brand-new agreement, a brand-new MOA, MOU.
The MOU is new because it's got a new price point, so, um, sorry, we, we gonna say something, Lucas?
Well, we have a meeting tomorrow. We have a budget meeting tomorrow.
Oh, we can throw it on tomorrow.
Yeah, and, and Glenn has his hand up, but we have a budget meeting tomorrow. So if, if, if that's amenable, if that solves a problem, maybe we could do it tomorrow.
Yeah, because Nick, when you said mid-month, today's the 11th, so I'm not sure if we get more mid-month than next.
No, yeah, but we were.
Trusty Lucas has a point. We, we do have a, a budget meeting tomorrow, which we can slip something in, something like this, so.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be, that'd be, you know, great. Yeah, we were, we crunched to try and get all these meetings in and, yeah, so, sorry about that.
Dan, you have a template for this from, from Sustainable? Put your, put your mic on.
Yeah, you're muted.
There's a resolution with them the last couple of times. It's a little bit different. So if you had the agreement, I'll just take a quick look at it and write it up for tomorrow night.
So Nick, we'll send you tomorrow in the morning. We'll send you a template. I'm not, I'm sorry, template, a, a resolution we've, we've, the board has approved in the past. And we have to make, if we have to make some changes, we'll do that during the day and then present it to the board in the evening and they'll have to vote to add an item to the agenda.
Okay, all right, that's great. I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you so much.
That's as fast as it gets around here.
No, that's, that's awesome. Yeah, the next day, that's, that's amazing. So we appreciate your flexibility on that.
We, we aim to please.
Okay, here.
Thanks a lot. Okay, communications to the board. There's a five-minute limit on this. And I already heard that Glenn has his hand up, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a quick question for Nick to start.
Okay, well.
We can ask him tomorrow by email, Glenn, but he's gone now.
Okay, Nick is still on.
Oh, good.
Let's, 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 let's start with the communications, uh, presentation. If you have a question, we'll, we'll get it to him.
Okay, that, well, the, the question to him is going to be, bottom line, what kind of, of, uh, price increase are the residents of the Village of Mamaronek looking at starting, uh, when the new contract comes in?
If you want to shoot me an email, I don't, if you all answer the emails, that would be what you would like.
Yeah, well, we'll do that tomorrow. Okay, we'll do it tomorrow. Thank, thank you, Nick. Thank you.
All right, I'll talk to you tomorrow, Glenn. Sorry about that.
Glenn, clock's running.
Yes, the town, the Town of Mamaronek sent out their tax bills and a few residents actually called me with some questions on it. And I just wanted to answer them publicly if anybody wasn't sure. We get charged a sewer rate on the town tax bill. That's for our sewer district, which basically is we have our own, we have our own treatment plant down here. Mamaronek is part of our district. Our local bill is for our local sewer pipes. We have a refuge tax, which is Westchester County's recycling costs. And the third one is EMS. The Town of Mamaronek actually runs our EMS. So two-thirds of us pay a ambulance tax to, directly to the Town of Mamaronek. Right now, we, we pay a fee either once or twice a year to cover those residents. So those were just the three que, uh, questions that I was asked. On the rental law, one of the, the big actual protection on the rental law, and Bob can check this, is actually the tenants. New York State is very, very protective of the tenants in New York. And I think a, a lot of the restrictions that you would find on the rental law has to do with you can't force a tenant to allow somebody to go into an apartment and have the apartment checked. And believe it a lot, or not a lot of people simply do not want people that don't belong in their house in their house. You know, whether, whether the landlord has got substandard or whatever else, there's a lot of people who just don't want public officials in their house for any reason. But Bob can research that. We had some real good budget meetings. A, a lot of good things have come out of them. Uh, one thing, and, you know, this actually goes, goes back to new members of the trustees is, I think that we should put together a little book that, you know, basically it's almost like budget, budgets for dummies. You know, most of us know what we know because we've been here for 15 years. Augie ought to be a professor with the amount of times he's patiently explained the inusias of the budget, the capital and the debt.
Inusias?
I, yeah. The, sometimes I mispronounce words. But the bottom line is Augie's been very helpful to every one of us over the years and has probably repeated the same thing 100 times. Maybe we can get together and have the budget committee with the staff write a simple pamphlet that when you become a trustee, here, here you go. These, these, this is the budget. These are the definitions of the budget. And this is what the, uh, these are what the different funds are. This is the operating, this is the capital. That way you get a running start. And instead of Augie 101, you can start at Augie 202. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Glenn, I, I think Glenn called me a dummy. I'm not quite sure, but we'll.
No, I, I certainly did not.
In any event, my thing has always been to keep it simple and, and if I, if you can't understand it in simple terms, that it's too complicated, needs to be simplified. But that's, that's it. All right, here we go. And no more communications from the board. We got public hearings now on the, on the tentative budget. And let's, let's take a look at that.
Think you need a motion to open.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. A motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any comments from the public on the tentative budget?
There's a hand up.
There is? Where you see? Glenn again? All right. Welcome back, Glenn.
Thank you. Our tentative budget, uh, there had been a question about the sales tax. The sales tax numbers are actually coming in very well. The January and February sales tax have come in 15% and 16.5% above last year, according, according to Westchester County. The problems that I do have with the budget is I think we're being a, a little bit overly optimistic with our, with our income lines. Though I do think that we probably have about a $250,000 cushion in our sales tax and mortgage tax. The, the other one that cautionary, and you just heard part of it, is our energy costs, whether they be electricity, heat, utility costs, water, and our supplies costs are coming in extremely high. Every, every, every department head who has gone out and, and bought anything in the last three months, including Jerry when he bought the sand, including when we bought the timber, including Wreckin Park, when they went out and they had to get seating and, and items like that. You're, you're seeing, you're, you're seeing an extreme raise, yet in the budget itself, most of the supply lines are neutral. And your overall energy is at a 20% increase. You could, you could do the budget the way it is, but I would not do any new hiring on the budget in, for at least six months to, to see how it pans out and see how these new supply costs actually affect your expense side. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, any other comments? I can't see that. Okay, thank you. All right, I guess we close the public hearing now?
I think we need to adjourn it.
Okay, adjourn to 4:25?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next, the public hearing on PLLB 2022 to exceed the tax cap. And that is the, the template, the de facto process that keeps our options open as we, as we proceed. So we can do it if we need to. Any, I move to open the public hearing?
I'm against it, but I know the majority of the board is in favor of it.
We need to open the hearing first.
Let me finish, Lou. Thank you. I'm going to, I'll second it, but only because two members of the board are not here and the majority of the board are in favor of it. I am not in favor of it. I have been consistently against it this year, last year and before. But in the interest of being fair to everybody, I can second it.
All right, it's just opening the public hearing. All in favor of, of having a public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous. All right. Any comments from the public about whether we should go this route and leave this option open? Done?
No hands up.
Okay, so we, uh, a motion to adjourn the public hearing until 4:25?
So moved.
Second, with the set, with the same proviso.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, there we go. Okay, audit of bills. Resolution authorizing budget amendment for over-budget accounts. In the backup material. We presume that we just voted on it straight through. Okay, um, motion to approve the budget amendments for overhaul, over-budget accounts?
I, I think it'd be helpful if Jeff just gave a, a quick rundown for the people watching.
Sure. So, so these five items, I think there are five items. But basically for, for some minor adjustments in our water, heating, mileage, which, which is gas. We call it vehicle fuel and mileage. And then some, the largest number is unallocated insurance. We're taking from the revenue line of insurance recoveries and moving it into our expense line. It spells it out there. It's pretty detailed. This, this resolutions have come a long way in the, since I started and they look really good now, very self-explanatory. But they're just some minor items just to, just to pay the bills.
No, I understand. There's a lot of people who are listening, they don't.
Oh, sure. I understand that. I appreciate that. You're right. You're right.
Our insurance rates go up because of Ida?
Because of, because of Ida, something, something I'm not going to be able to get from FEMA. But, yeah, insurance, insurance popped up pretty good. And, and, you know, many of the board members know, most of the public doesn't know, but our insurance isn't just paid once a year like a typical insurance policy of, you know, residential insurance policy. We have all, all different times when we have to pay and renew insurances. And so that's how, that's how it's done around here. It's not, it's not a June 1 type of thing across the board. So we get renewals all the time and, and we pay them, we pay them as they come in.
And then the other things are really just expenses have gone up.
Yeah, mi- minor stuff, you know, a little bit here and there for, for different things. It could also be attributed to just, you know, you know, when you have a $1,500, $1,500 water bill or, or something along those lines. Let me see here. What is it?
Con Ed, well, Con Ed.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just some minor stuff that, that has to get cleaned up in order for us to finish out paying the bills.
Yep.
All right, resolution to approve these items?
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, next is the budget transfer, the asphalt hot patch trailer. Jerry, explain this one because.
Yep, I'll explain it. So, so in, in this area here, it's, it's basically, we need to, we need to get a piece of equipment to continue to, to continue to patch our, 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 our potholes. And what we have is we're, we're, we're long on material. So we have extra money in our material line. And what we wanted to do is utilize that and purchase off state contract a, a two-ton hot patch trailer. We needed, we needed one anyway. This gives us a, a new one. And now we have a backup one because we never had a backup one. So now we would have two. And this was something that the, the new assistant general foreman and I discussed to try to utilize some of the funds in our material line to get a, a second, a second trailer out there when we want to try to get more potholes filled in that, you know, period of time when it's not raining or, or, you know, we're having inclement weather. So that's what.
A spring and autumn thing, right?
Well, it is. I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely now. And what it does for us now is it gets us, it gets us more, more pothole repair on the street. Instead of putting one crew out, we can put two crews out, but then we'll always have a backup now, which is important because when the other machine goes down, for whatever reason, we don't have a backup.
And, and the cost?
24 and change, 24,102 off a state contract.
And you're taking this out of a material account?
Material account, yep. Out of our current budget. We're not asking for additional money.
And, and that doesn't impair the increasing costs through the end of the year?
No, we're covering on materials, Dan. We're covering on materials.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
So different utilization.
Take a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have your new machine.
Thank you.
However long it takes, right?
Well, no, I think, I think it's pretty close to, it could be delivered within a, a 12 to, to, 12 to, to 25-day window. So.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't be interested in a long-term purchase like that. That's why we wanted to act on it.
All right, we need a resolution now authorizing budget transfer for stormwater river cleaning overtime.
This takes the money that we have in river cleaning out of contract services and puts it into overtime because we're going to be doing some handwork. Not some, quite a bit of handwork in-house with our existing employees as opposed to bringing in an outside contractor. This way, not only do we, we get in there during periods of time, you know, afternoons and, and Saturdays, but we also gain a larger understanding of the issues and problems in our waterways firsthand by having our, our staff in there.
It's only gotten worse since this last storm.
Yep.
So it's, it's $30,000 is all that's left in the, in the fund, right?
$30,000 is what, is what's there. There's a couple of thousand. I think I left a couple of thousand in there for, for some utilization of supplies or, or things of that nature. I think we had 32.5. I just wanted to move the $30,000 into overtime so we could use it specifically and only for stormwater management utilizing in-house staff, using our staff for in-house work.
And that's enough in the short term?
This would be, oh, yeah, yeah, it is. And this would be a. This would be, oh yeah, yeah, it is. And this would be a primer to bringing in. The dredging contractor because we would focus on those areas first. This way the dredging contractor wouldn't have to. They would just focus on the the heavy work and not the simple light work.
And and we'll address that a little bit later, right?
Yep, we'll address that in my report.
And this is and this is not a fund, it's a budget line item.
It's in our budget right now.
Budget line item, not a fund, right?
Not a fund.
I misspoke.
I I think it's a great idea. I'm think glad to see that we're used to get a better understanding uh in our rivers. Um but I would like appreciate if you could give us a cost analysis of, you know, the overtime versus, you know, outside contractor. Uh similar to the other request, it would be very helpful and then the people know better.
What the what the challenge would be for me is to find an outside contractor. Who would be willing to go into the rivers like a a landscape company or somebody like that to do handwork and um. And and not have, see with our guys, um there the the scope of work is. More known to them because they're experienced with the the flooding that goes on. They know. Certain areas, they know people's backyards, they know how to get in and out of areas. So it would be difficult to put this out to bid. Um or to um, you know, get price quotes uh because I think what we would get is higher prices. Just because the contractors wouldn't necessarily know what they're getting themselves into. Our our staff actually actually uh, you know, would be the ones to just go in there and so. We have an hourly rate for them and it's a fixed hourly rate, so. It would be a little bit of a challenge to get a contractor to do the work that I'm asking them to do.
But this is this is removal of debris, not cutting trees, moving uh stone.
Right, so it's it's removal of debris that's already fell, it's already fallen, that kind of stuff, then, yeah.
And 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 I, you know, it needs to have happened yesterday or the day before. I don't know if we can wait.
Stuff sponge up, uh you know, there's there's logs. Uh I can tell you behind um Kyle and I saw uh. Behind Tulip Tree, that development there, uh logs laying across the uh across the uh. The Beaver Brook um creek there that uh that would have to, you know, requires handwork. It's not big stuff, it's eight-inch, ten-inch stuff. But you know, you have to, you have to drag it out, you got to cut it up. It's it takes a little bit of time to get that kind of stuff out of the water.
There's also stuff like sinks. I mean, there's sinks, there's.
We saw. Yeah, today at Grove, we saw we saw two recycling, those square recycling containers. We saw two of them when we were at Grove Street this morning, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of junk around that just needs to get pulled out, plus, you know, the debris, the wood. The uh the wood, when I say wood, I'm I'm talking about trees and and brush that just need to get cleared out, so. And that takes, that takes a lot of handwork. There's no, there's no other way of really getting in there and cleaning that stuff out.
Okay, we're we're grateful you um you issued the order. Um I'm grateful you issued your order, Jerry, and uh. And uh we'd like to, it'll start what, in a week or so or?
Right after Easter. Yep, after Easter, yep. I wasn't gonna commit any weekend work, uh you know, during the Easter, during the this holy week time.
Oh, let's hope it doesn't rain between now and then, all right?
Yeah, I hope not. You're right.
All right, um. Motion to uh authorize a budget transfer?
So moved.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, all right, great. Uh the next is um abstract of manual vouchers. All right, help me out with that.
Ogie helps you with that kind of stuff.
Any question? Just ask any questions, basically utilities.
Utilities?
Utilities and postage typically, unless there's any questions from staff, just motion to approve.
I saw nothing in the packet that raised my eyebrows.
I.
No?
It looks like we're making big progress on the I and I bill, but.
Yes, but that's.
That's the next budget.
That's the next part, yes, the next part.
All right. All right, um. Motion to uh prove the abstract of manual vouchers.
So moved.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is abs- abstract of uh. Audited vouchers with reports.
For one million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand three oh four ninety-two.
Okay, and that is a.
Yeah.
Okay. One million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents. Any questions?
Now, as as Lou, one one thing as Nora pointed out that we're moving along on the uh on the sewer project, the first. The first, you know, the the first five point five million. We're on uh we're on our third street, uh which is Maple, full-cut repair. We have five additional streets to continue to do. Almost all of the slip lining and the rehabilitation of the manholes. Uh casements have been completed, so we're about uh we're between seventy-five and eighty percent complete. The last twenty percent will take a little bit of time because it is uh heavy extensive work. Uh to do full-cut repairs, we're basically, you know, going in and removing six-inch pipe or abandoning six-inch pipe and replacing it with eight-inch pipe and then connecting all the houses. And we happen to be doing full-cut repair in areas where there's, you know, house to house to house. There's no space in between these houses. They're um they're right up against each other. So there's quite a bit of connection uh work that's being done. Uh it'll be um uh the the last group. Of streets, well, one will be Gertrude and and Ralph, and then they'll go into um Washington Venice area. Whether do Madison Center and um. Madison Center and I think Washington. Is where they'll go into um and we'll be doing full-cut repair in that area there, which is going to require some. Some special management of the parking situations. Uh so sewer project is moving along. Uh and then the um. I did the final review of the next phase, which is approximately three million dollars. Um and that uh doesn't look like it has too much full-cut repair. It's mostly slip lining. So the next phase is a lot less disruptive for residents. Uh it's basically getting around a couple of trucks uh as they park and do the slip lining. In our uh in our village. Um but that's uh that's something that will probably. Probably happen right uh right towards the end of the summer, maybe mid, early, early mid-fall.
And the timeframe on this uh phase?
This phrase, we'll 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 anticipate if they're if they can continue to move along, uh we'll probably have it done. I think we have another uh, I think it was. Sixty-eight or sixty-nine days left for the next uh. Group of roadways. So we're looking at, you know, we're looking at three plus months.
Okay.
So by the end of the summer, beginning of fall, we'll have this phase done. Of which everyone knows we have a four-point-nine million dollar grant, uh which out of that four-point-nine million, we're we're on the hook for one point six, but. The truth is, it's it's found money for us because we were going to bond the entire five-five. Um the next phase has been presented to the uh to save the sound. I think we've um gotten to a point with uh the Save the Sound attorneys where we're now uh. Finalizing our um. Our our time with them, which is a very welcomed news for myself and and Mr. Bob Spalzino, so.
All right, uh we we need a motion to approve the uh ordered voucher with reports?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
You have to sign both of them.
Oh, go sign them. Uh that's right, deputy mayor, how about that? Got a couple of bucks to get me on the subway. All right, um old business.
None.
None, all right, there you go. Um new business uh resolution authorizing bench donation. At East Basin of Harbor Island Park. This is another one of these uh. Memorial benches.
Yep.
What uh?
I'm gonna read it, I can read it.
Oh, no, I read it, okay.
Okay, good.
Ogie's helped me out here.
Okay, good.
Uh whereas um Mr. Marco. Macalso is desirous of donating a bench and plaque to the village of Mamaroneck. To be placed in the east basin of Harbor Island Park in loving memory of Marco and Ar- Ardelene. Macalso. And whereas the quoted cost of the bench and plaque is two thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and the bench. As a donation must be accepted by resolution of the village of Mamaroneck Board of Trustees at their discretion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accepts the donation for the bench and plaque at Harbor Island Park. Honoring Marco and Ardelene Macalso. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees on behalf of the village, thanks, Mr. Macalso, for this generous gift to the community.
Questions?
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I can.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right. Okay, our resolution establishing a fee for commercial fishing charters. Um two weeks ago, we first heard about this. Whereas at their March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two work session meeting. Harbor Master Jeff LaRusso recommended the addition of a fee category to be added to the twenty-twenty-two Mamaroneck Harbor. Fees and charges schedule, allowing for the operation of commercial fishing charters out of Mamaroneck Harbor. And whereas, in addition to the commercial fishing charter fee, there would also be an ancillary benefit of additional parking revenue. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following fee to be added to the twenty-twenty-two harbor and. Watercraft fee schedule as follows, commercial fishing charter fee thirteen thousand dollars.
Before we move the motion.
It's uh, okay.
Is that right? That that doesn't, that's written correctly.
It says thirteen hundred.
Just thirteen, yeah, the the comma's in the wrong place. Okay, all right.
Well, the decimal is too.
No, it's it's thirteen thousand dollars, but the question.
Thirteen thousand?
Yeah, thirteen thousand.
The question from the audience also.
Okay. All right, question uh from you. I'll go ahead, Dan.
Jeff indicated that this was going to be for the use of a independent workflow. Uh and I think we need to put that in the resolution as opposed so that uh we don't use the transient dock. Uh for this and we don't use of the uh other village docks.
Go ahead.
That this would be an independent uh workflow that we have space on that they could use, utilize. And I'm all for that, uh but I think we need to specify that in the resolution, otherwise it could be anywhere.
Oh, th- this is just for the 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 fee, so I think.
But it's the fee for what? And the fee is.
Commercial fishing charter.
Yes, and I'm suggesting that it be designated of commercial fishing charter charter to an independent workflow.
I um.
Uh otherwise, Lou, we can. Just doing it by that category, it could be used at any dock and that is not the intent of what we have been told, what we're trying to do.
Well, we 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 can direct our employee, uh however we wish. I don't think we need to put it in the resolution.
Uh I would like to make it in the resolution. So I would like to say therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves. Fishing uh fishing charter uh at an independent workflow uh with the following fee uh added to the blah blah blah.
Um I I don't see, I mean, what if they have to do it somewhere else uh on an emergency basis? I don't think uh.
It's it's it's. It's not the emergency, it's the per- that you're not establishing emergency, you're establishing something, that's a whole different thing.
We're establishing a fee.
Suggesting is, the concern I have is this. Turn into having fishing charter boats taking up space at the transient dock. Which I'm not sure that that is the policy we want to do. It could also take up space at other dock, you know. Uh which I don't think we want to do either.
Well, I I I may agree with you on that. I just don't think this is the the uh the way to do it. I mean, this is just.
Well, you know, that that Lou, you're entitled to feel.
Okay, all right, all right.
You know, I, you know, I, like I didn't, you know, I'm not in favor of the um, you know, two percent, but I'm, you know, I understand. Others wanted it, so I was happy to let it continue.
My question is, Jeff was very specific about wanting one. You know, there's only going to be one charter, not a lot of charters. And it was going to be in one location. And I think if we put a fee that's vague. People might, would, if people applied, let's say five people wanted a charter, how do we say no?
Um well, so um we we now have misgivings about this, I guess.
No, I don't have.
No, we don't, we don't have misgivings, but I think what Nora is suggesting is the same thing that I'm doing. If you limit it to an independent workflow. That means if there's if there's no room, there's no room, period. If there's room, there's room.
Jerry, you want to rework this?
So.
Hello?
Last meeting, did we have a timeline where Jeff wanted this? Because we can push it to the next meeting and and.
His his concern was at our last meeting.
Yeah.
He didn't, he couldn't give them a. A relatively quick green light that they would go elsewhere and there was another, there was another. Area that would be, was considering doing it and, you know, you would lose it. That was his concern. So we uh we, you know, we asked him if we had to do it, you know, two weeks ago, said no, but if you can do it into, you know, at your next work meeting, uh your next um. Board meeting, it would be very helpful, uh and then it cured.
All right, so what do you, what are you, what are you asking for, Dan? If you give me the, give me the word wording.
Okay, where it says therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the use.
The following fee.
No, no, just hereby approves the use of an independent workflow. For fishing charters, for 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 fishing charter boat. And the following fee to be blah blah.
Work. Flow.
An independent workflow.
I think you could put independent workflow in the first paragraph and that would solve it.
That would be in the whereas, it's not in the.
Whereas isn't.
The where the whereas doesn't count in terms of what is operative. It just says that's the reason for doing it, but it doesn't make it mandatory.
Independent workflow um. For fishing charters, right?
Yeah, for 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 a fishing charter boat.
So the fee is going to be commercial fishing charter. Fee at a transient, at the at at.
The independent.
Here's what we have, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the use of an independent flow for fishing charter. The following fee to be added to the twenty-twenty-two harbor, the harbor, the the following fee for which. All right. To be added to the twenty-twenty-two harbor and watercraft fee schedule as follows, commercial fishing charter fee thirteen thousand dollars.
That's where you have to add the dock. Commercial, I think, I don't know.
That the what?
So.
Can you read it one more time?
Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the use of an independent workflow for fishing charter. The following fee for which to be added to the twenty-twenty-two harbor and watercraft fee schedule as follows. That's not great, that's not great sentence construction, but I think it holds up.
So I think it works.
That works, just that we'll understand that they're going to get picked up off the uh. Off the off the ramp, right? People are not going to go out to the boat, to the.
He's either going to use, he's he's either going to use the public uh tractor dock or, you know, the transient, but he's not mooring there, that's.
Oh, you're right, that's right.
Yeah. The 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 issue is, so camping may be misinterpreted later on. You know, by mistake that all of a sudden we're taking public space away.
Sure. But the 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 users, the public who utilize the fishing charter will use the public, the public walkway.
So so we're all happy with that wording?
Works, yeah, that works fine, that works fine.
Great, all right, so um.
I just want to make sure it's thirteen thousand, not thirteen hundred.
Yeah, we have to make sure it's thirteen thousand, so.
I have thirteen, well, I put thirteen K uh dollars on, is that a, is that the?
They just. It was, we did, read it into the record.
Okay, all right, all right. Should I read the whole thing, make it official?
Yeah, read the whole.
Whereas, okay, whereas at their March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two work session meeting. Harbor Master Jeff LaRusso recommended the addition of a fee category to be added to the twenty-twenty-two Mamaroneck Harbor Fee and Charges Schedule. Along for the operation of commercial fishing charters out of Mamaroneck Harbor and whereas the addition to the commercial fishing. And whereas the addition to the commercial fishing charter fee, there would also be an ancillary benefit of additional parking revenue. Therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves the use of an independent float for fishing charter. The following.
Independent workflow.
Use of an independent.
Work.
I have, I have it trustee.
Okay, thank you, alright, a workflow. Following fee for which to be added to the twenty twenty two harbor and watercraft fee schedule as follows, commercial fishing charter fee thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, so move.
So.
Thank you.
Second, is that a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, there we go.
Let's go fishing.
Let's go fishing, yeah, alright. Next, a resolution authorizing additional funding for dock replacement.
Okay.
Jerry, you doing this?
I'll do it, yeah, so, um. So in January, the board authorized sixty five thousand dollars for just materials and hardware. Uh, we were purchasing, uh, that type of, uh, material off a state contract. Um, when we, uh, we need an extra, we need an extra, um. Uh, I think it's nineteen thousand and change, I can't remember what the, the number is.
One, nineteen, eight, seven, six, and eighty cents.
Okay, thanks, so, hold on, let me pull it up, because I shouldn't do this from memory. Okay, so, so now, uh, therefore be resolved, the village board amends the January twenty fifth resolution and approval. And authorizes Click Treasure to create a capital budget item for phase two of the dock with a budget of seventy three thousand. Uh, therefore, um, I'm sorry, resolved that the village manager here authorized, uh, the purchase of pressure treated wood from HD Supply. In the amount of twenty seven thousand, eight, seventy six, eighty on the Sourcewell contract twelve, twelve, eighteen, HDS. And that's it.
Okay.
Uh, I'm glad that we're continuing to replace the docks, um, I do would like, again, I'd like to make a amendment to. Uh, now therefore be resolved after the first paragraph. Where it says and be it further resolved, uh, and to be further resolved. That all work be in accordance with all laws and regulations, including ADA.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we've done that before, right?
Yep, we've done that before.
So I'd like to, I, with that amendment, I'd like to so move the resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, next, communication to the board.
Visitors.
No hands.
No, no hands, okay.
No hands.
I guess Glenn's tired.
That's not possible.
Alright, uh, report from the village manager.
Give me a second, let me pull it up. My report is basically. Um, answering a series of questions from a resident. Um, which I didn't have the time to do today. I was busy going in and out of Manhattan for, um. Personal stuff, so let me pull it up, this way I can read it. And get everything set up. Okay, so. Let's see here. So I had a series of questions regarding, um, the, um, private contractor that we discussed. Uh, that, that a group of staff discussed, uh, several weeks ago. I did an emergency order to get, um, a project of dredging completed, uh, in areas mostly outside. Of the, um, of the Army Corps project, no sense in us going in and dredging areas that the Army Corps plans on dredging. Um, so. Uh, we spoke to a contractor, it's JT Cleary out of Brooklyn. Um, this contractor, our harbor master Jeff LaRusso has worked with in the past and, and they're probably the largest in New York State. Um, from what everyone is telling me. Um, the experience of cleaning rivers. To flood mitigation, so, so this company, I should tell you that this company. Gets hired by the Army Corps of Engineers to do work and dredging for them. That's the kind of company this, uh, this is, they do a lot of work, of course, in New York State, because we're not. Um, we're not the only ones who flood in New York State, there's a lot of communities that flood in New York State. But they also do work in the Hudson River and in other areas. They work with the Army Corps. Um, so I know that they know how to work with the Army Corps. Um, in the event that we have to correspond with the Army Corps for any questions or issues. Um, one of the questions that the resident had asked is who and how will, will, uh, will we communicate, uh, to the Army Corps regarding the scope of work? Uh, that we're looking at, and I'll explain the scope of work in a second, and that'll be me. If the board allows me to, to manage the, the Army Corps project, it'll be me. Um, if not, uh, it could be our village engineer, it could be a project manager. I'm not sure if that's, uh, been exactly determined yet. So, um. We're writing specs, or we're using the specs, I should say, that we used in two thousand and eleven, I'm just updating them. Uh, most of the areas are the same that we worked on in two thousand and eleven. When, uh, then manager Slingerland, uh, put this work out to bid. Um, received the, um, received the, uh, the, the permits and we had our, our. Engineer at the time pulled the permits, um, from the D E C. Which our current consulting engineer is doing now. So I'll have those specs finalized in a few days. Um, we discussed with the company, um, several ways of, of working. Uh, as far as getting quotes regarding this, and I'm leaning towards after reading and writing the specs. Excuse me, rewriting the specs, um, of a day rate where a crew with equipment would come in, a three person crew, four person crew. With equipment would come in and access areas which we will assist them in doing, um, to, uh, to do the dredging. The areas that we're talking about that we've done in the past. Are, um, the Marinerak River from First to the Hillside Bridge. Uh, obviously the Hillside Bridge is being worked on and Mr. Sonoff has reported that there has been some, some work in and around the Hillside Bridge with the contractor. Um, you need a lane area which, uh, we're still under investigation. Uh, because the county did some work there recently. So, um, we're taking a look at that area. That's probably an area we're going to do, but that's not set in stone yet. Um, I think we may, um, put that as, as a last item, definitely an item. Uh, that we're going to do, an area that we're going to do is Grove Street and Hampshire, right on the, uh, Harrison Village border. Which, uh, has, uh, county, we need county access for that, but we will secure the county access for that like we did in two thousand and eleven. Um, I was there with, um, acting general foreman and our acting assistant general foreman. Uh, Chief Barney and Pablo Ruiz, um, today scoping out that area there and, um, there's a significant amount of, not just silt that is built up. But fist sized stones have been, um, gathered in that bend, have gathered up in that bend. Um, which is a significant, uh, um, issue that needs to be addressed. Bud Walker Park, uh, which is really the community garden along ninety five, that whole area will be, will be addressed. And Rockland Avenue, uh, to the village salt shed on Fenimore Road, uh, other areas will be added. Um, as we secure access agreements right now, all of these areas, and of course, one area that I just mentioned is county. Will be assessed, uh, will be accessed, I should say access. Uh, because they're all village owned properties, um, but, um, if we need to access. Other areas on private, uh, properties, we need to create access agreements for that. And that's when, uh, that's when Mark, our deputy and, and assistant, uh, village manager Dan, uh, get involved in helping me do that. As I said, a lot of these sites have been, uh, focused, uh, have been the focus of dredging, uh, in two thousand and seven and they continue to be. Uh, according to our observations, uh, issues, um, after, of course, Ida, so, um. We're inspecting the rivers, uh, we're using public access, we're trying to make it simple so we can go in on the first phase and actually get something. Substantial completed, uh, during the summer months, our dates of, uh, of, of service. Are going to be May fifteenth to, to the end of October and we'll be working every day where the permitting. Will be, will be continuing to work, um, as we can. The resident asked if, if, uh, we will continue to do a quarterly service program to ensure maintenance and prevention. We will continue to do maintenance, but not to this degree, we're not going to be dredging. Um, quarterly, uh, once we get the dredging project completed, we will continue to, um. Continue to monitor to see what the, uh, what the impact is of, of, uh, rain events, uh, but we definitely won't be doing it quarterly. Uh, we may actually do some dredging annually, uh, and that's something where we'd have to discuss something regarding a budget. Um, right now, I have a tentative budget, uh, of about two hundred thousand under the emergency order. That, uh, we could utilize, um, to get the most of these areas done. And our engineer in the past has been the village engineer, this time, uh, it'll be our, um, village consulting engineer, uh, Joe Chremelli and Kellid Sessions. They've already been directed to, uh, to, uh, approach the D E C and secure our permits. So what we're doing right now is, as we just approved the thirty thousand dollars in overtime, um, we're going to send our. Uh, force account labor or, or, our own forces to go out and do a lot of handwork. Um, in that period of time, as we wait for the. Permits to be secured, we need a permit from the D E C, we need a permit from, from the county. Once we wait for those permits to be secured, we're actually going in and doing the handwork. Which is really not disturbing anything, but basically just pulling stuff out that has already fallen and, uh, and, uh, could be clogging up. Uh, once we secure the permits, then we'll bring the, uh, we'll bring the, the dredging crew in. Uh, will probably be, uh, the engineer said will probably be a month, a month out from, uh, from last week. Uh, regarding our permits and so. Um, that's what we'll be, we'll be providing staging for the, uh, for the contractor. They have committed to a crew for the entire, uh, summer and into the fall. Uh, I'm not sure how long it's going to take them, I know that they are. The best crew around, so I don't have any gauge of, uh, how quickly they can get it done, but the quicker, the better regarding, uh, um, you know, our, our. Our concern and our anxiety about, uh, continuing to have, uh, uh, rainstorms, even a, a two inch, three inch rainstorm. Provides a negative impact for this community, so, um, and those are fairly normal storms. Um, so that's my report, um, I have everything, um, set up. Where I have all these questions answered, I will provide that to the resident who was asking the questions. As well as the board of trustees, but I'm sorry I couldn't, uh, finish out this email today, I was just, uh. I was told not to email and drive in the city at the same time, so I couldn't do it.
Yeah.
That was good advice, right?
Good, Dan?
Jerry, great report, uh, two questions or comments, um. You need permits from the, uh, Army Corps as well, I'm sure, uh, politicians would know that. Um, uh, you need that and you all, it's also includes the Department of State, those are the easy, easy ones. The second question is where are you going to relocate the material?
So that's a, a question that we have to look at. Um, the contractor said that they would, uh, potentially have the ability to remove the material or we would bank cast it. Um, we looked at some areas, we don't think that bank casting is going to be a, a, a big option for us, but it is going to be somewhat of an option. Um, so we may have to, um, may have to pay to bring the material off site. And that's where the concern is there.
Yeah, on, going back on one last thing on the permits, uh, from, you can get ten year permits for, uh, for that.
I wish, I wish, so I'm looking at permits from two thousand and eleven. And the last time we did this, unless I don't have them, um, we only have permits from the D E C and from the county. Uh, what we will do is we will secure the longest term of permits, I do have a, uh, call scheduled with Joe on Wednesday, not tomorrow, but Wednesday. And I'll make sure that we're on the same page, you just needed a couple of days, uh, to get some other projects out of the way. If I can secure a ten year permit, I'll definitely go after that, doesn't look like it, Dan, those permits, Sonoff, those permits you sent me, they didn't look like. They look like they were specific to the project that, that was presented, right?
Yeah, that was the county stream control permit.
Yeah.
I think they get, it was specifically cited the plans that, uh, Keith Fury had prepared back, back then.
I, I'm not sure the county will give a ten year, but you can get from core in the state. But, but you, but you do need the core. Um, whether, whether they did that in the past or not, I can't, I'm not going to.
It doesn't look like they did, but I'll do it, that's an easy, that's an easy.
It's, it's, it's a relatively simple thing, you know, for, for up.
Jerry, didn't they instruct us to do this some time ago?
The core?
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't remember that. They, what they said was, the only thing that they said was, and what I've read in the reports is that we have to. Provide a, a maintenance, a, a, a maintenance program after they've completed the project. These are areas outside of the, mostly outside of the core, the core project area that we're focusing on. No sense in, in, like I said to you before, no sense in us going into an area and that the core is going to, you know, doing their project because. The core is at zero cost to us, so.
But, but it might rain before they get there, um, what, 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 uh, what? When do you think that, uh, uh, they'll begin, really begin?
May fifteenth.
Yeah, really?
May fifteenth, yeah.
No, 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 I'm talking about the core, the core.
Oh, I don't know, well, well, so, so. So the, all those questions should be asked on May eighteenth when we have the, when we have that, that, that big, uh, meeting in, at the Emlyn.
Okay, alright, because.
They, they told me they weren't going to present anything until sixty percent, but.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of, a lot of motivation from the community has gotten them to, uh, to, you know, to bring the. To, to, to show up on the eighteenth of May, which is, you know. Thirty days away, so.
Is two hundred thousand enough?
No, so that's a tentative budget, that's a tentative budget, let me, let me, uh, um. So Lou, my thing is I don't like to talk numbers in public meetings, so let's just leave it at that and then we'll talk about, you know.
Well, what do we?
If I say half a million, my contractor may come back and say, hey, it's going to cost you a half a million, I'm a little leery about that.
Alright, well, what, what do we need to do to, uh, to, do we need to transfer some money to make it available, or do you?
Not yet, not yet, because it's an emergency, I can move forward with the quotes and the discussions and the permits and all of that stuff. And then when I have something, I'll come to the board.
Alright.
We'll keep it, we'll keep the numbers vague on purpose for now.
Okay, my, my concern is that if the, if, if, if the, the, the core is, um. A year or more out on meaningful progress on this, that we may need to do a lot more.
Well. Um, we can discuss that with the core.
Okay.
If, if they think that an independent contractor that the village hires is going to be faster. A contractor that they have hired in the past is going to be, is going to get in faster, I'm not sure how that dynamic plays out, truthfully, so.
About an hour.
We'll figure that out.
What about, um, uh, and what about the Beaver?
Handwork, yeah, that's part of the handwork, that's part of the handwork, uh, uh, project with our in-house staff.
Beavis, so, so they'll, uh, those folks will see some, some work in, in, in that, in that, uh, area.
They'll see a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, healthy, uh, young men and women in chartreuse shirts going through there.
Alright.
That's what they tell me that color is, chartreuse.
Right.
Yes, I think that's a very good description for it.
Right, right.
And I think, I like, uh, like Perry went, go, people see it way different colors.
Green, fluorescent green, they tell me it's chartreuse, so.
Green.
Alright, um, I appreciate, uh, the, the, the prompt work, Jerry, uh, we really do, I think, I think we all do.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. We'll keep, we'll keep plugging away at these big impossible projects, right, it's, uh, it's what gets me up in the morning.
Is there another question?
Yeah.
Or with you? I'm, I don't have my whole agenda here, hang on, I've, I've lost, I've misplaced something.
Um, the next item is, is, is Bob, village attorney, no.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
No, Augie, Augie, Augie's next.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, like to announce the resignation from Z B A Board, Meg Jurgen, like to thank you for a service, a volunteer service on that board as well, that is all.
Great.
Uh, village attorney. Spolzino?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, local law number three, if you recall, that was the law. Which prohibits the use of cannabis in the villagers' parks. Was filed with the Secretary of State and became effective on February twenty eighth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, minutes, commissions, board committees, uh, minutes of the board of trustees work session and regular meeting, March twenty eighth and budget work session, March thirtieth. Um, I have one thing to note and I, I should have mentioned it before now, Sally, uh. There was a, a, a talk of a, of a possible grant from the. From Nicerda, and I think it was five thousand dollars, not ten thousand dollars.
Right, it's five thousand, you're right.
Yeah, 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 alright, uh, uh, other than that, um. Uh, move to approve the minutes?
I don't need to approve them.
Oh, is that now? You just read that, oh, just read it, sorry.
They just accepted for the record.
Thank you. Okay, and then Minutes of the Planning Board meeting, March ninth, twenty twenty two.
Right.
Same thing.
Okay.
Just accept it.
What? That's it? Okay, okay, good. Finished? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Second, thanks, everyone, thank you.
Thank you for your help, uh, Dan and Nora, appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Take care.
Night.